Formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will ask our city clerk to please call the roll to ensure we have a quorum.
Councilwoman DeCecio. Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gallego. Mayor Stanton.
Here, so we do have a quorum present. We're fortunate to have an interpreter with us today. Ms. Holmes, please introduce yourself to the audience.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Under our city council rules, now is the time for citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to appear before this council and talk and discuss any subject matter they would like. The first citizen to speak under public comment is Ms. Diane Barker. Ms. Barker.
Good morning, mayor and council, and I want to again wish Thelda Williams, our councilwoman, who is constantly here, a happy birthday. And, um...[77.11][77.11](APPLAUSE). Yeah.
This so is perfectly.
And, you know, we're headed toward the Fourth of July, and we won't be seeing maybe some of you, you know, for around, but I want to wish you a very safe and happy one. And a renewal to re... for you to know, if you don't, and let's practice it, that the city of Phoenix is an all-American city. And we should really embrace that in going forward. And I'd like to talk a little bit. We had an ethics panel, and what came out of there was, "Phoenix must implement strong preventive measures and endeavor to create an ethical culture built on leadership, education, and best practices." You know, in getting there, sometimes it really takes some tough lessons because, you know, it takes analyzation of what you're doing, review, and responding to just criticism to move ahead. And we're wishing the best that the city will take the ideas and the comments from the public because, as Debbie Cotton, who's retired yesterday, said near a dozen times, "We're not here at the city for ourselves. We're here because of the people and to serve the people." I remind you of your oath. I know that we had comments out of some of the city departments that you take an oath when you come in, and so it's presumed that everybody is upholding that oath. And that oath is not only do you defend against foreign enemies, but domestic enemies. And we can have them here, and they're not necessarily what we call the terrorists. They're not necessarily of a certain religion. They can be people that don't have the best ideas for our city and America in just competition, fair dealings, and speaking up when things are wrong. And so I wanted to impart that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Mr. Pat Vint. Good to see you again, Mr. Vint. And then followed by Mr. John Rusnick.
Yes, thank you very much. I am Pat Vint, and I did what the news... what the news said about eight months ago, that every elderly person, one out of four, is going to fall down. So I went outside by the swimming show. Sure as hell, I fell in. It was dry and lit on my head. Good thing, or I'd have killed myself. But anyway, it's been eight months, and I've been staying in and trying to be good, but that don't work. You've got to be a nasty, filthy, stinking person, or you'll die young. So that's why all the good people are gone. Only leave... See there? Sal's a perfect example. He's useless.[275.36][275.36](LAUGHTER). He's our city councilperson now, but he doesn't do anything for us. And now we've got a new Deborah Stark over there, and yesterday she said to me, "That's just your opinion." Well, everybody has opinions, I would think. But you know, you're all here to work for the citizens of Phoenix. Does anybody of you realize who the citizens are? You're not the only ones around this world. Look at here, we've got a full house today. Most of them will not speak because they're afraid. That's a terrible thing, to be afraid of your own city. You know, I've been in Phoenix since 1952, and I landed at Luke Air Force Base from Korea. And I thought, boy, what a wonderful place, you know? And all of a sudden, everybody's moved here. But it's not for... but the city does for us. It's what the city weather is, except for in the summertime, when it's hotter than hell here. But anyway, Deborah, you know, I guess you're not our city councilperson because now Sal DeCecio is. They changed that little line up there and took in... Did you know that? That you're not our city councilperson? Is that why you haven't answered my emails?
Just gave me a text.
Or do you really care? You don't have anything to say? Well, that's good. It's like Ed Zirker sitting over there. He's getting $300,000 a year. His two predecessors, David Cavazos and Frank Fairbanks, they scheduled a system to where they could screw every citizen that lives in Phoenix. They figured it out so that they could...
I'm turning to the councilwoman.
What's that word? They call it a spiked attention. They walked out the door with over $300,000 in their pocket. Now we're paying them each a quarter of a million-dollar retirement. That's a half a million. Now they got... Ed, they got you up over $300,000, so that's $800,000. Do you have any idea where that money comes from? Yes or no? You don't? See there? What good are you? We don't need you. If there wasn't citizens here, you know, we wouldn't even have a city mayor, council people.
Thank you, Mr. Vint.
Or a city manager. And a system that Phoenix lives under, a mayor, city manager-type government, that these people all up here that were paying big money...
Thank you, Mr. Vint. You've got to finish up your thought at this point.
What?
We're out of time. If you could finish up your thought, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We have a couple of speakers that would like to speak.
No, I'm not... I'm not done yet.
All right, you have three minutes. Each speaker only has three minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Rusnick is next.
Thank you.
Mr. Rusnick, do you wish to speak? Thank you, Mr. Vint. And then after Mr. Rusnick will be Terry Youngs. Good to see you, Mr. Rusnick.
Thank you. Well, I come here to tell you a little bit about my councilperson. My councilperson is DeCecio. I have this problem with a neighbor. It's a... problem that should have been taken care of 10 years ago. It hasn't been... well, 11 years ago. It hasn't been taken care of. I met with my councilperson one time, and he told me, "Everybody violates the law. Everybody violates the law." So what I'm telling you people here, don't vote for him never... next time. When it come up to vote for him, think about what he's done to me. Think about what he'll do to another citizen that never had no problems with the city, had no problems with anybody, that he can go ahead and do his thing. So what I'm saying, we've got to pick our councilpeople that are going to help the citizens because most of them won't help you at all. I went to Deborah Stark's meeting yesterday morning. She didn't call on me. I wanted to speak on the deal with the parks and the... that they haven't... or they're having problems with people falling down, people having trouble without taking enough water. Well, that's their problem. But I think what you need to do is look closely and see whether they help you out. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that?
Councilman, you may respond as briefly as possible. I would request you limit it to the... if he made misstatements of fact as opposed to the electoral type issues, but yeah, please...
Well, yeah, total misstatement of facts. The issue is about whether or not there's a half-inch rock versus a three-quarter inch rock. His neighbor has a half-inch rock, and he believes that the city ought to enforce a three-quarter inch. That's what this has been about for the last 11 years. It's insanity at its best. I mean, it's a neighbor-on-neighbor debate or fight, and the city of Phoenix is not going to waste taxpayer money on this, period. It's just not going to happen. And the city of Phoenix made a ruling before I even got in office 10 years ago that it was just a claim that should not have been heard. So that's what it is, and it's literally about a rock. And that's... and I just don't think that's where taxpayer money's out to go. Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you very much. No, Mr. Rusnick, we've got to move on to the next speaker. Paula, you had a chance to say your piece. Councilman DeCecio normally wouldn't be able to respond because of the personal nature of the... of the statement. Mr. Terry Youngs is next.
Morning, mayor and council. I just... to keep this brief, I'm going to just read an excerpt of a letter that I sent to the city council that I haven't gotten a response from. "My name is Terry Youngs. I own Terry's Tire and Auto. I've had the pleasure of repairing undercover vehicles for the city of Phoenix Police Department for approximately 30 years without a single complaint. All my..."[706.01][706.01](Cough) excuse me. "All my employees have had background checks per the DEB to assure the safety of undercover officers. I understand the need for quick turnaround, and I've always made police vehicles a priority and have developed a good reputation and relationship with all the equipment coordinators that use our services. I'm writing this to ask why the police department is no longer allowed to use our services." My understanding is that there was a new assistant council member, somebody that was installed, and... Sal, I remember you from the old days with Burger Roberts up at the church, doing the neighborhood services, that all the vehicles are now required to go to a single shop at Cave Creek and Bell. And I've had the equipment coordinators from the airport, from 500, 600, 700, all the precincts, the Drug Enforcement Bureau. I don't know what happened. I don't know if this was supposed to go out for contract. Thirty years, I've never had a contract. I've got combinations on my wall. So I was just hoping to get somebody's attention to see why this is going on because actually your law enforcement personnel is more upset than I am.
Mr. Youngs, you've got the city manager's attention, so I think he's going to assign the appropriate staff person to discuss the issue with you right now.
Mayor, I'd like to have a brief... Our Republican manager, Mr. Campion, is going to come talk to you.
Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also have a briefing on this, that he's got my attention as well, so if I could...
We'll prepare reports to the council on this issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Youngs. There are no other individuals here to speak on citizen comments before the city council, so now it's the city clerk to please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is numbered G6182 through 6194, S42691, 42708, and 42751 through 42799, and resolutions number 21454 through 21464.
All right, thank you very much. There are no meeting minutes to approve for today. We'll now move on to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commissions nominations as corrected.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I know we have many citizens here to be sworn in so they can begin their service to the people of the city of Phoenix. So I'll come down to the floor. It'll be to my right, your left. We get the citizens that are here to be sworn in, line up, and we'll swear in, and then please come behind the dais so that the individual council members can say thank you in advance
Come on over. You've got to get in the camera shot.
Forty-two, counting.
All right, so please... please raise your right hand. Aye, and state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of... and fill in your... according to the best of my ability. So help me God. You're official. Thank you for your service.
Hi, glad to meet you. I am a disability commissioner. Good job. Hi, I'm a disability commissioner. Oh, hi. Oh, you're the one right there. Yeah. I've had to take a test late.
Thanks.
You got it?
Hi.
Yay.
Happy?
She has a motion on 1.1.
Mayor, I move to withdraw this item.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to withdraw 1.1. We have a second. Any comments on that? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The 1.1 is withdrawn. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion...
Ed.
We're doing... oh, we're doing liquor licenses next? Suspending the rules, take liquor licenses? Vice Mayor, what's the motion?
Motion to suspend the rules and take liquor licenses, items four through 25.
I'll take it.
We have a motion. We have a second to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Move approval of items four through 25.
We have a motion. We have a second. Looks like all the cards are in favor of the proposed motion. Any comments or questions by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is item number two. Item number two is a proposed hearing on a property tax levy for the 2016-17 fiscal year. We have numerous cards on that item. I propose that we move forward on this item where our city manager has a chance to make a short presentation as to why he is requesting that the city of Phoenix implement a policy of floating our property tax rate and why he's proposing a particular rate for fiscal year 1617. Then I'll open it up for a public hearing, and we'll take all of the cards that we have so citizens have an opportunity to provide input on the city manager's proposal. Then we'll close out item number two, and then we'll move on to item number three, which is see if we have actually a motion on adoption of the proposed property tax levy for 2016-17 fiscal year. Has any member of the council proposed we act in a different manner than that? With that, Mr. City Manager, why are you proposing that the city of Phoenix float our property tax rate?
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. I'm Ed Zirker, city manager. With me today is Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson and City Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton. Item three on the agenda, mayor, as you said, is a request to float the property tax rate to a total of $2.17 as a total levy of $238 million. This is required by state law and city charter to be acted upon by the council in July. This is the first property tax rate increase since 1995. And as you asked, mayor, why are we recommending doing this? I will tell you, I do not do this lightly, nor do our financial staff. We are all residents of Phoenix, and we all own homes in Phoenix, and so this affects us too. But this is about the budget of the city of Phoenix. This is about the financial wherewithal and reputation of the city of Phoenix. So the property tax has two key components. One component of property tax is paying our debt service. That is the obligations that we owe to pay for the buildings used by our residents and our employees to provide police and fire services, our police stations, our fire stations, our parks, streets, swimming pools, storm drains, storm sewers, libraries, senior centers. Those are all paid for by the debt service component of the property tax. The property tax pledge provides long-term stability financially. It preserves the confidence of rating agencies about the financial wherewithal of the city of Phoenix. And to make that point, we have the highest credit rating of the six largest cities in the United States. We should not take that lightly. That is an important commendation to the leadership, mayor, of you and the city council in leading this city. Since the rate... the second piece of the property tax is to fund our general fund budget. Those are the services that we provide our residents. 911, police response, fire response, libraries, all the things... senior centers, all the things our residents tell us they value highly and desire from us. And the employees who provide those services are part of that as well. Since the last rate increase in 1995, the population of Phoenix has grown by half a million people. We've built two police stations, 14 fire stations, 19 parks, and provided 1,000 miles of streets additional since 1995, just to name a few things. For further perspective, then, even at $2.17, the proposed levy of $238 million is less than the levy adopted by the council in 2009-10 and 2010-11. For the typical Phoenix homeowner, we've talked about this, so what does it mean to the average person? The typical Phoenix homeowner, the increase from $1.82 to $2.17 means $51, $4.25 a month. And that is almost $100 less than the typical homeowner paid in 2010 for city taxes. The question that we've proposed and we asked in budget hearings that we've had since March was, "Is this worth it?" And the response that you received in the hearings that you hosted, the response we got from city residents, city employees overwhelmingly has been, "It is worth it to pay $4.25 a month more for the financial stability of the city, yes, but more for the things that people value that we provide: parks, youth services, libraries, senior programs. When you call 911, we show up." All those things, people have said, "That is worth it." And that's what this property tax is about. The credit rating of the city and the services adopted in the budget that the council approved that took effect 12 hours ago, nine hours ago in the city, that is what the property tax is about. So with that, mayor, we're happy to answer. Any questions you may have? And further this item, as city manager, I strongly recommend the adoption of the levy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Maybe you can introduce the other professional staff that are at the table with you.
Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson and Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton are here as well to answer questions.
Okay. I think as a matter of order, I said we would hear from our city manager as to why he's proposing floating the property tax rate in the city of Phoenix. We would then hold the public hearing. No action, but he did offer any questions now, so I guess I will turn it to members of the city council to see if there's any questions for our city manager as to why he is proposing floating the city of Phoenix property tax rate. Councilman DeCecio.
I think it might be a surprise to everybody that I'm not going to be favorable toward the tax increase, but I do wish that one of the things staff would do would provide a more balanced approach to these presentations, and we've talked about this before. I think that the public deserves to know why and what has been happening the last several years that the political body up here created that caused the situation today. And that's about max... they use nice words like maximizing the primary. They use words like that that the public just doesn't understand. But the bottom line is, the city of Phoenix has been robbing monies from the payments of the bonds that everyone says is... everybody wants these nice projects. I do too, and the public wants those things. But what the city of Phoenix has been doing behind the scenes and not really letting the public know, because you didn't hear it in the presentation, they've been taking money away from capital funds. So essentially, let me make it really simple. They've been robbing money to pay your house payment and using it to pay your day-to-day expenses. So if your house payment's $1,000 a month, they've been only paying $600 or $700 of that. They've been literally lowering that amount, and money was being diverted to pay for those operating expenses. And I want the city manager to explain what has been happening because that would make a more balanced approach to this. You can't... I know that everybody, you know, on one side of it wants to have this tax increase, and they're going to say and do whatever they have to do. But a true presentation would have shown the history of why and what is happening today. And I'm going to ask the city manager to give that presentation.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman DeCecio. And Mr. City Manager, I think, and Councilman DeCecio has been consistent with this throughout. He's been critical of the policy choices made by this council to provide more of our property taxes to use for core city services even during the worst recession. You were city manager for a portion of it. You certainly recommended that. Why did you recommend that we use property taxes for core city services during the recessionary period?
Thank you, mayor. And you really explained it partially here. First of all, there's no robbing. That's the incorrect word to use in this. You said it was a policy choice, which is what it was. It was done openly and clearly since 2010, that the council made a decision, recommended strongly by city management, of which I was a part at the time, that in order to preserve the services that people want, to the extent we could, we couldn't even preserve them all in 2010, the council had to make some hard choices and cut library hours and freeze hiring of police officers, even at that. But in order to have... in order to not go farther into cuts in 2010 and since then, the council made a policy choice to use the primary tax rate to its full extent in order to preserve the services people want. When you call 911, we show up. When you go to the swimming pool, you are safe. When you go to the parks, you know, I can repeat that list. That is a legitimate policy choice made by this council and recommended by management to use the primary property tax to preserve those services. When you do... when we did that, and the policy choice was made to freeze the rate at $1.82, therefore we had less money for paying the debt service from the property tax than was required. we had less money for paying the debt service from the property tax than was required over the last six years. However, the council made the choice to use a reserve fund that had been built up from those taxes over the previous 10 years to pay that debt service. And the council has been responsibly and judiciously using that revenue, that reserve fund over the last six years. And you will, again, even with this rate, we will again use that reserve fund in 2016-17. Otherwise, the rate would have to float higher. But we're using that reserve fund again in 2016-17 to pay our debt service. What we're saying today is that we have brought that reserve down to its minimum level. Just like all of us, no one wants to have their savings account at zero. And when you go to borrow money, no bank wants to lend you money if your savings accounts are at zero. So we are not putting our savings accounts at zero. We're putting them at a level that we've committed to and paying our debt service. And so that's why we're here floating the rate for the first time in 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to explain.
All right. Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Councilman DeCiccio, you had a follow-up?
Yes, I do. A couple of things, though, too. I want to make sure you had the opportunity to respond in your own way. But the bottom line, it was robbing that fund. That's what it was. And I brought it up then, then I said that they're going to do this and they're going to be pushing a tax increase. I expected it to happen middle of last year, but they did it this year. So at the end of the day, the City of Phoenix knew this was coming down. The public never knew about it. They had planned this tax increase a few years ago and had a policy in place in order to raise those taxes. At the same time, you're being told about fiscal accountability and responsibility. I'm telling you that we did not see fiscal accountability and responsibility. Even in this budget alone, there's close to $5 million in PR, lobbying, membership dues. Most of us would like to fund police with those kinds of things, but instead, that's where those monies go. It was a refusal to look at a strategic plan of would have been able to look at the City of Phoenix. We are a $3.5 billion operation without a true strategic plan in place of what is and what is not important. What can we fund? What can we not fund? What are things that are strategic? What are not strategic? And is it something that the City of Phoenix should be doing in those types of businesses? The City of Phoenix's average cost per employee is $110,000 per employee for over 13,000 employees. $110,000. It's unsustainable unless they do things like this, like raise taxes. So this budget, and I'm going to ask the city manager, is this the highest revenue that we've ever had in the history of Phoenix this year? If that's a yes or no, then you can answer it however you want.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yes, the revenue of the City of Phoenix is the highest it's been. It's finally recovered from the pre-recession levels, and it is higher.
And then, what is our surplus going into this budget? What was our surplus?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, the budget that we took to the public and discussed was based on the $60 million surplus, much of it one-time funds. And that was allocated in the budget that is actually in effect right now for several, for preserving services, restoring employee compensation, cuts from the last six years over the next three years, and adding some new services. By doing that, that's what the surplus was used for.
And then, how much is the value of this tax increase just this year alone?
The property tax rate increase is $37 million.
Or the total amount, if I may ask? The total amount?
Seven.
Dollars? The dollar amount, how much is this?
Thirty-seven million.
Thirty-seven.
Okay. So without belaboring this point, you've heard me, and I'm, you know, I'm doing this in what I believe to be a very respectful way, just because I feel so strongly about this tax. It is literally taking advantage of the taxpayers. It's the wrong thing to do. Instead of looking at non-essential services at the City of Phoenix and strategically planning what we need to do, this council, and it's not the staff's fault because we haven't given you the direction to do that. I have, but I'm only one of nine. But until the City of Phoenix puts in place a true strategic plan of what is, what is not important, what is the mission of the City of Phoenix, you're going to constantly see this. You saw a $31.5 billion tax increase just last year, eight million, $7 to $8 million increase in tax on people who commute to the airport. And then you also saw a water fee increase, or I call it a water tax increase, of a minimum of $15 million a year, which is actually going to turn out to be more than that. So all these things happened in the recent time, and at the same time, last week, last week, and they'll tell you it came from a different fund, it's all your money. Last week alone, the City of Phoenix voted to spend 10, well, actually, $9.875 million to let you know about recycling. They paid a private contractor, an outside company, $10 million to let you know about recycling. That's the kind of stuff that's going on here at City Hall. And until you, as a public, say no, you're going to be, you're going to have to face these high taxes and fees. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. So again, city manager offered to take any questions at this time. So if there are any additional questions, Councilwoman Williams.
Ed, I recall hearings on floating the tax and that a couple of years ago, I think, although we agreed to do that, I don't think we did a big increase at that time, did we?
Each year for the past, well, every year for the past 20 years, but in the last six years since the policy was adopted, the council each July has voted publicly about the property tax rate. It has been a subject of discussion over the last six years regularly. And the council has chosen to, for 20 years, to keep the property tax fixed, and in the last six years, to use the reserves each year of that time.
Right. But we knew at some point the reserve would be nearly depleted or at a point that it shouldn't be tapped anymore. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So there was, I remember people down here testifying on it, so I know there was a public process. I respect my colleague, Councilwoman DeCiccio, but I, on some points, I agree with him. And on others, I have to say that I think it is very important, the city's responsibility is to public safety and to infrastructure. And although there are items on the budget that would not be my priority, they are other members of the council's priority depending on their districts and their district's needs. A lot of things that seemingly wouldn't impact public safety are actually, take youth summer programs. That doesn't sound like public safety. But in fact, if we didn't keep many of those kids very occupied in very healthy activities, we would have to increase police and fire response because they're going to be active in one way or another. So that falls, in my mind, into public safety. There are other examples, I think, that are very important. The water rates, yes, they had to go up because our, we want to keep our water safe. We want to make sure that it's there when you turn the tap. We want to make sure that the firemen go to a fire plug and they have ample water supply and the right pressure. And you can't do that with broken pipes. And that's what the city is facing. When you have pipes that are nearly 100 years old in some areas, or are just simply crumbling and others, it is our responsibility to make darn sure that those are repaired. And that increase in the water is for capital expense. It doesn't go for employee raises. It doesn't go for other things. It's for capital improvements and putting in the new pipe. I don't like to pay taxes any more than anybody else, but I will tell you that I think it is our physical responsibility to address this because, as you said, our credit rating is the highest. I don't know if people understand, when you have that, you don't have to pay as much interest than we have to do any of these projects. And the projects are the ones that were approved by the voters. We built them, and we have to pay for them. And we didn't anticipate the recession hitting. So it's a combination of different things that come to us today. And I just think it's real important that everybody understands that this is not done lightly in any manner, I don't think, by anybody on the council. But sometimes, good government is not free. And we have always been very proud of the City of Phoenix and the way it's been run and the services. And I think at our public hearings, we heard that repeatedly from our citizens. And so you have to pay for it, one way or the other. And I just think this is responsible action.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Williams. Any other comments or questions by members of the council? Councilman Nowakowski, please.
Mayor, back in 2009, 2010, I was on the council, so was Thel, the Sal, and I have two of my colleagues also, Michael Johnson and Claude, and we had to make some hard decisions. And one of the decisions were that we're, our city was going through hard times, foreclosures, the economy was down, and we had a choice to either put on a property tax or not. We decided not to. Why? Because our residents needed help. And that's exactly what we did. We put it off for a better time, and exactly what Sal's talking about, we have a 60,000, 60 million surplus. Good times are here now. Now we have to bite the bullet for those hard decisions that we had to make back in 2009 and 2010. So to say that we never had any public debate on it, we actually had a lot of debate on it. And I know that we got beat up a lot. I mean, you can ask Thel, myself, and Sal, or Claude, or Michael. I mean, we had to sit here and make some hard decisions. We had to make, our mayor at that time had an emergency food tax that we had to implement, and our employees. Our employees even had to make a hard decision to cut their pay by 6% to make sure that at least we had the minimum services that the City of Phoenix can provide with police, fire, our parks, our senior centers, and all that. So we all took sacrifices. And now the times are changing, and now it's time for us to, that comment was used, bite the bullet, and I think that's, it's time to bite the bullet, folks.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Nowakowski. You did recognize them, but I did want to note that both Councilman Johnson and Councilman Maddox look very relaxed out in the audience there today, so. Other, Councilman Warren, please.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This might be a question for Jeff Barton or Ed. How much is this year's budget, how much has it increased over last year's?
Let me look. I actually don't remember. The budget for this fiscal year coming up for 16-17 is $1.22 billion. The budget that we just exited yesterday was $1.061. So we're up about $150 million in total.
$150 million total in one year. First, I'll address, because I've heard it used a couple of times, the sacrifices need to be made and so forth. And that happened in the 2008 to 2010-11 period. Desperate times require desperate measures. We're not in desperate times right now. As Councilman DeCiccio pointed out, this is record revenue for the city. You don't necessarily usually raise taxes during times of record revenue. That seems counterintuitive. But then you see how big the budget's growing, $150 million in one year. I am curious, how much of that increase is pay raises?
Councilmen.
May I make a correction? It's weak concessions. They're not pay raises. Our employees made a sacrifice in 2010, and it is about time that we do them due justice and make sure it happens.
All right. Thank you very much. And I want to make sure the question's answered, whether we phrase it as pay restoration, which I would phrase it well, or pay increases, but the councilman does deserve the best ability to give an answer to that question.
So for the current... Can I retract and rephrase so everybody understands what we're saying? We're paying the same people to do the same stuff, how much more for this coming fiscal year or the one you're in, we just started, than we did last year?
So with the restoration of pay, as Councilwoman Pastore alluded to, we are, the increase in contracts for the general fund for this fiscal year is $20 million. On top of that, we also, as we've talked to you throughout the process of developing the budget, our pension costs are going up by about $36 million in the current fiscal year.
So of the $150 million, $56 million, 36 million of it is pension-related. 20 million is pay restoration, increases in salaries, however you want to phrase it. A third of it, more than a third of it, is that. Is that a fair? Ed's nodding.
Yes.
That seems fair. Okay. How much, I know you said it before, but just so the audience can follow, how much is the property tax increase?
The property tax increase from $1.82 to $2.17 is $37 million.
Okay. So more than that is going to the pensions and the pay raises alone, take out the new programs, et cetera. It's just food for thought for people who are wondering where their money is going. We could say, well, it's going to this pot of money over here, or that pot of money over there. So the city has raised its sales taxes, its water rates, its ground transportation fees at the airport, now this, property tax increase, two years ago to balance the budget, again, in record revenue times. Record revenue times, still short of money. I think they raised what, I forget how many fees were raised and how much the parking fees were raised in 2014 to make the budget. I think it was a total of $11 million, but that's a couple of years ago. So we keep raising fees, revenue, taxes. It may all be different pools of money, maybe it's hitting different people differently, but that's a lot of tax and fee increases in two years. It's four big ones: water, sales, property, and parking, in about 10 months. 10 months. That seems like a lot. You know, I guess I would say this, we talked about priorities, so I'll just read off a couple of things that are in this budget that I'm not in favor of. So there's, it's been in the news this week about the state and what they're doing with their lobbying teams. That was a bugaboo of mine when I was in the Senate, and it continues to be, and apparently it was something the governor noticed, and so he made some changes there. So our government relations department, I guess, for last year was $919,000 and change. Probably comes as a surprise to some people who have never watched me talk about this at these meetings before, that we're spending almost $1 million on a lobbying outfit here at the city. $699,000 was paid to external lobbyists, in other words, contract lobbyists, many of whom I've known for years. I voted against all of it. Friends or no, we shouldn't be doing this. The city doesn't have a public relations department, it says here, but last year, our expenditures for our communications office, this is all different than the money I was just talking about, $2,251,000 and change. Memberships in different organizations, so people can travel and so forth. Again, I'm not participating, but whatever people want to do is whatever they want to do. They're voting for it. $1,238,500 bucks. So there's a few million bucks that apparently people are willing to raise taxes to pay. I wouldn't do it, but they're giving me some more numbers that are inflated. I'll just take what was provided by staff. I don't know, I don't know which member was dying, was like, we got to have this in the budget. When can I get to vote on that? I can't wait. And I'm willing to pay these taxes to do it. I don't remember having those discussions. So I'm not sure everything in these budgets is sacrosanct. You know, how much of the increase, the $150 million increase this year over last year is new programs?
Councilman, I actually need to correct. I need to correct that.
We need to correct it. Unfortunately, doing math in public, we got to go back here a little bit.
I actually pulled the wrong, I looked at the wrong number from the schedule. It's actually a 5.7% increase, or it's $50 million. So I, that's my error, looking at the wrong schedule.
$50 million increase?
Correct.
So you're saying it's a $50 million budget increase, but we've got $56 million in increases in pensions and salaries?
That is correct.
Okay. So everything else is going down, but we're doing new programs. Is that efficiency savings or?
That is correct.
Okay. That's a good thing. But we're still raising costs on the taxpayer, $50 million rather than $150. $150 did seem high to me, so thank you for correcting that. That seemed a little, so I'm glad you were able to break out your calculator and do the math. We still have several million dollars that I highlighted, I'm sure you guys can add that up if you'd like, that I think are frivolous and unnecessary. I think a lot of people watching at home would probably agree with that. We could use that money to offset some of the costs for the pay raises for employees. We could use that money to do a lot of different things, the pension increases. But instead, the default here has been raising taxes. Again, four big ones in 10 months. We had a proposal that was on this agenda today that got withdrawn, the 1.1 million, or, excuse me, 1.1, which was an increase in the water, water bill. So you'd have an extra item on your water bill. That was going to raise however many million dollars it was going to raise. I'm sure in a year or two, this idea is going to be floated again to pay when we can't make our budget, even though we may still have record revenue. You know, a couple of years ago, well, a few years ago now, they doubled the jail tax, if anybody remembers that. Went from $1 to $2 on your bill, your water bill. And it was said that that was because we had to pay more for jails, but of course, it didn't really go to that. It turns out, much to a lot of people's surprise, it just went right into the general fund. There was a plan floated in the paper, a couple of different articles that I saw, talked There was a plan floated in the paper, a couple of different articles that I saw talking about raiding the sports fund, which was set up in, I think, 1989 for new stadiums. So it got raided already to do the hotel, that was a financial disaster for the city. And, you know, I, I guess, I guess, I don't know, I'm just surprised that we talk how, in one sense, how there's these silos and all this stuff is so sacrosanct, at the same time, everybody seems ready to just raid the funds, which might make sense in a time of crisis, but doesn't make any sense in a time when you're, you're having record revenues, none. It makes me wonder what's going to happen with the next crisis, because we really don't have that big of a cushion. I guess bring back the food tax, do this water thing, raid the sports fund, which I think is inappropriate. So I just wanted to say that and let the public know at home, 50 million dollar increase, 56 million dollars is really just for the same stuff, it's just more expensive. And it's, it's frustrating to see, the first resort is not to look at, how much are we spending on lobbyists? Do we really need to do that? Maybe it wouldn't solve the entire problem, but the unwillingness to cut even one thing, I find wildly inappropriate. I don't, I don't blame you guys, by the way. The body makes the decision, you just propose. So you can propose to your heart's content. Couple of years ago, there were complaints about the prior city manager, there were complaints, well, we voted for a budget based on his projections, and then he left and left us holding the bag. We're all big, big folks up here, we're all adults, we can make our own decisions. So, so I don't blame you guys at all, I appreciate your correction of the numbers, Jeff, and just wanted, I mean, these things are fact, I don't think any of, what I've said is indisputable, we raised taxes or we didn't, it went up 50 million or it didn't. These costs are what they are. So take out what I think about it, they're simply facts that I thought the public should, should know. And I appreciate the time, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Warren. Okay, any additional questions for our city manager? We will then now move to the public, who have an opportunity to address this council as part of a public hearing. Then I'll turn to, well, then we'll be done with item number two, then we'll move to item number three, and see if there is a motion on the proposed floating of the city property tax. So now I will open the, oh, I apologize.
Sorry.
Councilman Pastore, my mistake. You have a question for our city manager?
I do. And it's regarding our rating and our revenue fund, because I've been, none of us liked, all of us sitting here are not in favor or do not like to raise taxes. And we have gone round and round, round and round, literally up until this morning. So one of the questions is, it's been brought up, and I've asked, and I have sat and looked at different numbers regarding our revenue, our surplus, and wanting to possibly swipe it to zero. And I want the public to have a concept, if we swiped it to zero, what could happen? And where we need to keep it, because as all my colleagues up here do our own research, and in 2015, Moody's rating report stated that the City of Phoenix could see its current rating AA2 go down significantly if we, if it reduces its debt coverage. And using revenues and falling below the 75 million threshold would do just that. Could you explain to me what they're talking about?
Yes, Denise Olson, our chief financial officer, can, can talk to you about that. She is in constant contact with Moody's and Standard and Poor's, who are rating agencies.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, thank you for that question. I think the importance of that reserve fund and keeping six to nine months' worth of reserves in there, is it shows that we will do what our policy has stated, and it maintains our credibility with the people who have purchased our bonds, that we are serious about paying debt service over the long term. We are serious about doing long-term financial planning, and we'll keep a fund balance in place to ensure that we're going to make those debt service payments. If you reduce that reserve fund down to zero, the property tax that we're looking at today could be higher in the future, because there's not a lot of flexibility. The council will be forced in a position to either raise the rates higher or cut, because there's not a reserve fund to give you any kind of flexibility in managing that property tax. And that's an important feature. The other thing is, we are constantly getting, getting credit for our liquidity. So having liquidity is very important to the city. It allows us to do things, it allows us to adjust when the economy could go down. If we have a major decrease in home values, like what we saw before, we have a reserve fund in place that gives the council the ability to manage through that situation. Without that reserve fund, you have two choices, to cut or to increase the property tax rate.
And I, just to repeat again, to kind of put it on a personal level, it's like anybody who's gone to borrow money or, or do anything with credit, the, you, when you can demonstrate you have resources, you get a better credit rating, which gives you lower cost of borrowing. People who have no money in the bank and no assets are going to pay higher rates, it's the same with cities. If you don't have money in the bank, you're going to pay higher rates. This is a responsible amount of money to be in the bank to keep our rates low and our ratings high. Thank you for the question.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio?
As a follow-up, I'm glad Councilwoman Pastore brought this up. In 2013, this debate that's occurring here, the state of Arizona actually passed a law outlawing and making it illegal to do what the City of Phoenix has been doing. It's all because of the City of Phoenix that they passed a law in 2013 that basically says you can only keep whatever it is you have to pay out. That's it. No one's ever said or advocated to go down to zero, I haven't heard that one. But basically, you can only keep what it is you take in, that's it. And then, I don't see any other cities having issues with that either. But literally, the state of Arizona passed a law, based on what you're starting to see here, all these shell games that are being played at the City of Phoenix are now basically outlawed for other cities. The City of Phoenix maintains because we had been doing this practice, or the city had been doing this practice prior to 2010, or 2013, that we're somehow grandfathered in. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, just to clarify.
Mr. City Manager, I don't feel a chance to respond why the fiscal strategy of the city during those times, which was recommended by our professional staff, what was the, what was the reason behind it?
Just to clarify, the City of Phoenix is not doing anything illegal, and, and our use of reserves and our, the presence of reserves is completely legal. The money was accumulated before the law was passed, and so we've, and we have not added to that amount since then. Also, Denise has done research about other cities' reserves, and every other city in the valley has reserves like we do. So this is not unusual, this is not any illegal practice in any way.
Thank you very much, Councilman Williams, please.
Didn't the state also pass a limit on how much the home values can increase? It used to be if times turned around, because we had this happen over the years, over the decades. But the home values rebounded quickly and automatically increased what we collected. But I understand it right, that's no longer the case. Could you explain that?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, when we did this bond program, we did not have that limitation. After we did this bond program, there is a limitation now that home values can only increase about 5%. So that definitely caps how much in home values we can capture through this program.
Home values can increase, but are the assessed valuation?
Assessed values, that's correct, sorry.
Yeah. Councilman, please.
So, City Manager, if I heard correctly, is we are following the law?
Yes.
We have not done anything, I'm going to use the term that's been used, crooked or conspiring or anything like that.
We have not, you have made open public policy choices.
Okay. And we know that if we go down, we know in the reserve, at least for Moody's, what I understand, is if 75 million needs to be in the reserves in order to be healthy.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, that is correct. And I also want to stress that that reserve is helping us come up with a long-term lowest rate possible of $2.17. If that reserve goes away, that rate could be higher in the future.
And just to illustrate, as I said in my opening comments, in this year, 2016-17, we still need to use the reserve to pay debt service, even with this increase. If we did not have that reserve, this property tax, as Denise said, would have had to have gone higher. So the presence of the reserve gives the council the ability to moderate and modulate over time these sorts of things. So it is, it, again, it's just like in your own personal life. A savings account gives you protection against the little ups and downs of life that you have to protect against. It's the same concept with this reserve.
Councilman, any questions?
So, okay, so, so basically, we don't want to be like other cities, where they have, and I think we're a great city, we're a growing city, and we're an urban city. And so what I'm understanding is that, and, and my research says that in other cities where they have attempted to do this and did do this, the downgrade happened, and then what ended up happening is the citizens and the city, everybody, all, every one of us in this room, because we're all citizens or constituents, ended up having to pay more in interest and services than got cut. And I'm, that, that's kind of how I'm relating this. And I relate it, and I'll relate it to my home. When my son and my, my child want to go to swim lessons or want to play in a city activity sport, I use, I put special money away for those activities. That's like my little savings fund for their activities. But when hard times hit, I may have to tap into that little reserve and use it for other things. It's very similar also to the fact that if I want to go get a loan, my credit may not be at the level that it should be in order for me to get the lowest interest rate. So I will then not only pay more in an interest rate, I will have to give up front more in order to get the loan. So I'm just trying, that's how I'm relating it.
Yes, Mayor, City Council.
Please, your answer, please.
Yeah, this is, you're absolutely correct. This reserve gives you more flexibility as a council to manage that rate going forward. It also is going to provide us or give us the best opportunity to get really good refinancing in the next few years, so that we can get the best rate and keep this, the cost to our property owners as low as possible. And that's extremely important when you have the kind of debt that we have outstanding.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions for our city manager before we move to members of the public who wish to provide testimony for this city council? Obviously, at the end, after we hear from the public, they'll see if there's a motion in a second, then each council member can make whatever statement as they want in advance of the vote. So with that, I will now open the public hearing on item number two, the proposed property tax levy for 2016-17 fiscal year. Public hearing is now open. I have many cards of people wishing to speak. Please keep your comments to two minutes or less. If you go over, I'll try to wrangle you as quickly as possible, because we have a lot of people here who are, who are here to provide testimony, just like you are. Our first speaker will be Mr. Pat Vint. Mr. Vint, did you wish to provide testimony to this item? Two minutes, you're marked as opposed to the city manager's proposal.
I'm sorry it took that time, but if I would have been warned a little bit, but anyway. The problem is here, you've got to start at the top. It's proven beyond any doubt that we do not have management in the City of Phoenix. The two past city managers created this problem for themselves. They were not self-servants, or they are self-servants, they're not servants for us. So you're talking about now, you're going to have to pay these two idiots, I'll call them idiots, because that's what their name is, half, a quarter of a million dollars each, so for the two of them, that's a half a million dollars again. I know I'm going over this stuff, but it starts at the top. The whole damn problem is, Ed, that you don't have any idea what's happening. You got put in your position because you made a statement or something to David Cavazos at Frank Fairbanks when you first came to the city, that, that you worked somewhere, you had a job. Wouldn't that wonderful? So they thought, boy, we got to put Ed in our position, he, he worked somewhere, he had a normal job, he worked for, like the rest of us do. Most of us had to make things work out. If things get a little tough, you, you settle down a little bit. You don't keep giving raises. I heard certain city employees here really bursted out when they said, boy, we're going to give the city employees a raise. You know, you don't have to work for the City of Phoenix. If you don't like it, quit, go somewhere else. That's what we do in the business world. If it doesn't work, you change.
Thank you very much.
And I built my shopping center on 13th Street in Northern, I took a chance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint. Appreciate your testimony, a lot of people to testify. Mr. Rusnick, could you just speak next?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're also marked as opposed to the city manager's proposal.
Yes, I'm opposed to tax raise. If we got money in the bank, we don't need to raise taxes. We're supposed to use the money that we got, and then if we go in the hole, then we raise the taxes. Not now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. Let's see, our next speaker will be Ms. Greta Rogers. Ms. Rogers, you wish to write testimony on this item?
My name is Greta Rogers. I'm in favor of passage of the property tax, the first we've had in 21 years. It's needed, it isn't exorbitant. I attended eight of the 15 budget hearings earlier this year, and by far, the plurality of people who spoke on this issue were in favor. I understand that the city kept a compilation, and the ratio was 200 yay to 3 nay. That's 94% yay to 6% nay. You're elected to represent us, not your personal petty preference. This will be able to afford a 4.2% increase of city wages, which is restoration of 6% they forgave over six years ago. This is not a raise. This is fulfillment, partial fulfillment of a promise that was made to them six years ago, that when you had the financial ability, you would restore that which they forgave. The time is now. And you defeat this, and you will see attrition like you've never seen in this city before. They will flee like rats from a sinking ship, because you will have dishonored your pledge, and you will have disrespected the people who make this city work, the employees. It isn't benign of you. God knows it is not you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be former Councilman Michael Johnson. Councilman Johnson, you are up next, and then followed by Robert Flanagan. When I was showering love on our former council members here, I forgot to mention Councilman Craig Trippin is here as well. Thank you, Councilman Trippin, for attending today's meeting. Are there any former council members that need additional love at this time? All right. Councilman Johnson.
Did anybody notice that?
Mr. Vint, Mr. Vint, Mr. Vint, you had your opportunity. Mr. Vint, you had your opportunity. Councilman Johnson, the floor is yours.
Mayor, I don't know if I need additional hugs, or you guys need additional hugs at this one. You know, I just wanted to take the opportunity, Mayor, you know, last month, a while back, this council voted to support a budget. I don't know how any of these colleagues up here who supported that budget could not support funding that budget. If you supported the budget, you have to support to fund that budget. And when we talk about that budget, we have to look at what we're talking about with police, fire, all of our public safety, senior centers. What's going to happen if we don't fund that budget? While you out on break, city staff will be fumbling around, trying to figure out which programs they're going to have to cut in order to make this budget work. And if that happens, we will fall into a huge, huge deficit. There's no way that you can support the budget and not support this taxes. I'm surprised of all the discussing about the budget, because that's been passed already. There's things on there that people agree and disagree with, but it's been passed by you, the council. Now it's time to make sure that we're able to support that budget by making sure we have the income. We passed a food tax, and we don't want to be back in that same situation. We passed a food tax, citizens wanted the food tax, and what did we do? We ended it up early, and it came back and it hunted us. Let's do what's right. Martin Luther King said, "It's never too late to do what's right." Pass this levy, and let's do what's right.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Johnson. I appreciate it very much. Next speaker will be Robert Flanagan, followed by Charlene Tarver. Mr. Flanagan.
How are you doing? Thanks for allowing me this opportunity. I've never been here to speak before. I've sent a lot of emails, that kind of thing. Sal knows, he gets them. I'm opposed to this, and I'll tell you why. When I hear that it affects families, and it's just $51 a year, well, the people that rent a house or an apartment, that cost is going to be passed along to them, and that $51 will probably feed them at one point, or put gas in their tank. The property taxes and the taxes in general have been going up, skyrocketed. We have fees on everything. Our gas that we've been driving to work on, expensive. Ms. Pastore over there said that when she did it at home, and she put money away for going swimming, and then if something happened, they'd use it. Well, the way that, the way I see it, the city kind of does that, but then they use the money for something else and go swimming anyway. So we're kind of, we're kind of in a bind. I live in Arcadia. I bought my home with a VA loan a long time ago, and it's getting expensive. And pretty soon, you know, I'll have to sell, move, go away, probably retire to some place way up north, I don't know. But, you know, that's, that's how it is. We face these fees. You know, I don't have time to put money away because I'm spending on stuff. When, when you pass that 2% grocery tax, I went outside the city and bought groceries. I didn't spend anything here. And anyway, that was my side of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Flanagan. Thank you for your service to country as well. Next speaker will be Ms. Charlene Tarver, followed by Rob Robinson.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I want to start by saying, first of all, Phoenix is an all-American city. All of us that are here are here because we, we love this city, and we believe in this city, and we believe in the employees who work in this city. And what we need today is a leadership decision to be made. I won't echo what my colleagues, Councilman Johnson and Greta Rogers have already stated, but unresoundingly, the community has supported the property tax increase. We need the city council to go forward and act in accordance with the call of the community. If you do not pass this property tax increase, not only can you not honor the contracts that are outstanding, that means a significant deficit to our parks and our recreational services. That means our most vulnerable citizens, our seniors, our youth, our, our, our other communities will not be served. So we don't have a choice. This is not a time for us to deliberate. This is a time for our council to stand up, heed the call of the community, pass the property tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tarver. Mr. Rob Robinson is next, followed by Brent Kleiman.
Good morning, Council and Mayor. I'm Rob Robinson. I'm a native of Phoenix. My parents have been here since 1955. It's sad that once again, our fire and police are being used as political pawns to get a budget increase. I say, pay the fire and policemen first, and pay yourselves last. This happens over and over and over again in this city. I'm completely disappointed with the direction of this council under the leadership of you, Mayor, Mr. Stanton. The tax increase and fees throughout this city and the philosophy of tax and spend is unacceptable. I'm a self-employed businessman. Your fees and your taxes almost makes it impossible for me to make a living. To hear and find out how much everybody in this city gets paid off of the back of self-employed people is painful to accept. This is a city and a state that has a record number of people coming to this city, which is more and more people paying into funds and into budgets. If you did your job and made cuts and not spent money on unnecessary lobbyists and unnecessary trash program to tell us how to recycle, we wouldn't have these budgetary problems. That's why you're elected. You're elected to spend our money wisely. So when you come to the end of the day, you don't say, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have money for this, let's raise everybody's taxes. And then to hear that our city is floating the idea of building another sports arena? Where does that money come from? What is the private sector supposed to do? That's their, what they do. They do it to make money, and they make a lot of money. But we don't need to support them, and I urge this council to spend our money wisely and don't just, at the end of the day, raise our taxes and say, oh, well, there's nothing else we can do. You do have a choice. That's why we're here. You have a choice.
Thank you very much.
I ask you to spend our money wisely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson, for your testimony. Next speaker will be Brent Kleiman, followed by Todd Hoffman.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I stand here in favor of this levy. I, I'm listening to a lot of the council members and discussions, and I see people bringing up the idea of lobbyists and outside fees that are being paid. I own a small business, I own a couple homes in the valley. I don't want to pay this tax, but I think the tax is necessary. As a small business owner, you know you can't do everything by yourself. You hire people that are specialized in doing different things. The city has done that. Is 1.7 million maybe a little high for lobbyists? Possibly. But do we need those lobbyists to get our interests met statewide, nationwide? Most definitely. Does this city need to prepare for the future, collect this money, and do things proactively? Yes, it does. If we wait until we're at a zero balance and say, uh-oh, we better collect money, A, it will be much more difficult, and B, we will have harmed the city to a point where it can't be repaired. This isn't something that anyone's jumping up and down going, sweet, I get to pay an extra $50 a year, but the people that are looking forward and looking at this, they're saying it's a necessary evil. It's going to cost me money, it's going to cost everyone else in this room money, but the budget has been set. There are things this city needs, and this levy is going to cover those bills and make sure the city stays solidly planned moving forward. So I hope the city council passes this levy, and we move forward and do our business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kleiman. Next speaker will be Mr. Todd Hoffman, followed by Chanel Poe.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. I want to thank you for listening to me today. It is my first time speaking in front of you. I'd also like to thank Jim, he's my district guy, and I'd like to thank Sal for bringing this to my attention. Personally, I am against raising taxes. I think it's too soon. We've had plenty of money in the account, and with the economy, with things growing as it is, instead of just taking the opportunity to just build on another debt, let's take our time and, and think this out clearly before we pass judgment on raising taxes. So with that, I'm opposed to raising taxes, property taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, thank you for your testimony, and come back any time. Ms. Chanel Poe is next, followed by James McGarren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Once again, I'm going to echo my sentiments as I did during our last meeting and the meeting prior and tour in terms of voting on the budget. I am in favor of this budget. I want to thank our city manager, Ed Zucker, his staff, also Jeff Barton, and also Milton Dehony, on making a process transparent by having public hearings to have public comment and input. I advocated very strongly for our after-school programs that are also included in this budget, and would also thank you again for revising it to include the citywide body cameras, which is going to be very necessary. I want to thank you again for this budget and ask that you do vote and take action today to vote in favor of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Poe, for your testimony. Mr. McGarren is next, followed by Diane Barker.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm opposed to this budget and raising our taxes. We've had examples, I thank Councilman Waring for the list of wasted dollars. I haven't been able to be part of the process prior, because I worked two part-time jobs. I hear talk about, oh, we need to restore the money that police and fire have sacrificed. And that's all well and good, but what about people like me? That, I worked two part-time jobs. So far, I've been able to hold on to my house. I don't know if that's going to continue. This economy is, is not good. Citizens have, have been, our wages have been stagnant. I, I make less money than I did 10 years ago, and I think it is time to bite the bullet right now. When I hear people making $300,000 a year, I, I don't know what job it is that is, is worth that, but I, I don't think it's time to, to raise taxes right now. Look at the people like me that have homes, but we're barely making it. That $51 does mean a lot. So I thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down, Mr. McGarren. Ms. Barker is next, followed by Councilman Craig Trippin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Diane Barker, I'm a resident of District 7, and I think you've heard both sides here today, which is a good idea to do, but if you don't watch out where you're going, we could end up there. You know, I go around the city, and I've met a lot of friendly people, and they always give me information, you know, and, you know, I like that. But where we're going is, it's been a snowball. I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while, and it seems like we're always 37 million in a deficit, if you check back even in the recent years. And then I've heard Councilman DiCiccio's point, and I've, the thing about it, we do need to know where we're going. We need to know what the interests are that Brett Kleiman talked about, because when we're out of a lot of interests that are essential, then that raises the spending, and that's where this got to us. It has to reach a point, which is now, that you really, we look to where we're going in the future now. About my lifestyle, I will challenge any of you, can you live on $11,000? I bet you nobody in the city has that. I came from commission. Years ago, I made some good money in real estate, time to time, but I learned to live with nothing. And when I didn't have anything, I didn't know about government services, I didn't eat. And today, when I go to U.S. Men for different associations, whether it's MAG or Valley Metro, there's always food there. And it's wrong, because you're giving out millions of dollars, and people have food in their mouth, it's destructive. So it gets into a bigger thing. We're overfed. I have to say it, we're overfed. City needs to wake up, and we need to realize where we're going. Brit exit has already affected the state of Arizona in Prop 103, and they're expecting like they wanted 6%. It's probably conservative 2%. We can't, we have to be smart. We have to be conservative about what we're doing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Next speaker will be Councilman Craig Trippin, followed by Reverend Reginald Walton.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak on behalf of homeless services and to speak on behalf and in support of the city manager's budget and the tax levy that he's proposed. Last year, Central Arizona Shelter Services provided 4,700 unduplicated, well, provided services to 4,700 unduplicated individuals in the year. In addition to that, there is a overflow shelter, which serves approximately 300 to 350 people a night, and there is no future funding for that overflow shelter. Sometime in the next year, that funding will run out. I am personally very concerned that we're going to see the problem of homelessness get worse in the city and not get better. I think the long-term solutions are going to be a greater commitment to permanent support of housing and, and affordable housing. And I, again, urge you to pass this budget, because I think the need is there. I think the need's going to continue, and in fact, I think the need's going to increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Next speaker is Reverend Reginald Walton, followed by Neil Haddad.
Good morning, Mayor Stanton, council members. I stand to ask that you vote to fund the budget. The employees of the city of Phoenix deserve, they deserve, because when the city had their backs against the wall, city employees took it upon themselves to say, you know what, we will help the city in whatever way we can. Additionally, this budget helps the marginalized, and it helps those that may not feel that their interests are being served. Because this budget funds body cameras, in which certain elements of this city feel is a necessary, is, is a need, there, that there is a need for body cameras. And so please don't make this a partisan issue, make this a people issue, because people have sacrificed so that several members of this council that made that vote back then can now make that vote right now, for people that make this city great. Thank you very kindly. Good to see you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Reverend Walton. Next speaker will be Neil Haddad, followed by Kirsten Peterson-Johansson.
Mayor and Council, good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Neil Haddad, and I am here in support of the property tax rate increase. Just a couple of facts, why am I in support of it? Most stable form of taxation, and a great thing for local governments. You know, sales tax, if somebody wants to move, go to another place and buy a car where the sales tax is cheaper, you can do that. You can't move your house, your house, your property. It makes a lot of sense. And also, I'm hoping that it allows us to have greater reliance on the property tax so that it makes us less vulnerable in business cycles, market cycles. Also, the property tax is more progressive than a sales tax. Before Councilwoman Pastore mentioned some research, and I just want to add to some information, some research. You know, if we compare ourselves to other large cities around the country, the, just pulled from the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, they just released it last week, a... pulled from the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, they just released it last week, a 50-state study of the largest cities in each state. And they used an effective tax rate, which is the tax bill is a percent of a property's market value. We are below the average and it puts us at number 30 in the country, number 30 as large city in each state in 50 states, significantly below others. So I support the property tax increase because we made great progress in restoring the cuts in employee compensation, in hiring sorely needed public safety personnel. And also, I want to point out, as former Councilman Johnson mentioned before, had we left the food tax to sunset after its original length, we would not be in this position right now. So again, I urge you to vote on this. And also, something to consider for the next time around, improve the process, have open workshops where citizens can participate in the city manager's preparation of the budget in advance. Workshops so that it opens it up and that goes way before March. There are people in this city that would like to participate in that. Support this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haddad, for that helpful suggestion. Next speaker will be Kirsten Peterson Johansson, followed by Alice Baslin.
Good morning, Mayor Stanton, distinguished members of the council. My name is Kirsten Peterson Johansson with the Phoenix Art Museum, where I assumed the role as a deputy director overseeing all external affairs about six months ago. I am a new Phoenix resident and proud to be with you today to support an affirmative with regard to item number two in passage of the budget as it allows for the city to fulfill its commitment of obligation to the Phoenix Art Museum. As many of you know, the art museum serves a vitally important role in this community, in arts education, engagement, cultural enrichment. We are a nonpartisan, culturally civic convening power in the heart of downtown on Central Avenue and we are central to the lives of all residents regardless of background, age, or geography. The museum is relevant. We serve central to the city. 250,000 visitors, 700,000 annual web visits, 53,000 people follow us on Facebook. We engage 30,000 K through 12 school groups onsite or in their classrooms and roughly 10,000 of those represent Title I schoolchildren. Our docent community is strong. They're community residents and taxpayers of the city, 400 in number. And another 1,500 annual volunteer leaders support a variety of different projects at the museum. We are a community resource for some of our very most vulnerable populations, from senior citizens to those suffering with Alzheimer's, to economically disadvantaged populations where our free access days numbering three every month create an equal playing ground to make the arts available to all regardless of economic background. In addition to being the largest art museum in the southwest region, we are a civic institution in Phoenix. We're central to the lives of Phoenix residents. So as a guardian of this physical site, we ask the city to fulfill its obligation in partnership, in a strong public-private partnership with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. I know Amada Cruz was out of town, otherwise she'd be here personally to also provide testimony. How about Alice Baslin is next, followed by Janet Trailer.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to address the group today. My name's Alice Baslin. I came here representing Phoenix Art Museum, so we were nicely tag-teaming. But my, my education today has been so much broader and I appreciate it. The open conversation has made me even more encouraged to, to support a positive vote on the property tax levy. It does so much more for our community. That's really, really critical. Speaking on behalf of Phoenix Art Museum, as a parent who brought children to the museum when we first moved here 25 years ago, to a volunteer who has personally delivered programs to schools, to senior centers, with families who visit the museum, I know that the value of organizations, institutions like Phoenix Art Museum. Most recently, I became a trustee because of my belief in what it does. And I sit in these discussions trying to resolve very, very critical financial decisions, making tough decisions. As a trustee, we're so grateful for the long-term partnership we've had with the city. And passing this tax levy will allow us to continue that partnership. I'm very concerned about cuts to the significant maintenance and security funds, operational funds that the city provides through the property tax. So I'm here mostly to say, please, we need this funding. As others before me have said, the budget was passed. It's a great budget. It was passed with a lot of deliberation. And I just encourage us to approve the funds to support that budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baslin, for your testimony and service on as a trustee for the Phoenix Art Museum. Ms. Janet Trailer is next, followed by Judy Giles.
Good morning, Mayor and council members and everyone else who took the time to come here today. One of the things that wasn't mentioned about reserves that I think is kind of interesting, I'm, I'm a member of the City of Phoenix Arts and Culture Commission. In fact, I'm the chair. So I'm here today mostly though in my capacity as a resident of District Six, Mr. DeCicchio's, Councilmember DeCicchio's district. And I've been a member of my HOA board for a number of years. And there is nothing more important than a reserve. And just like our personal budgets and the city budget, that HOA affects the ability of our HOA to borrow money. And as opposed to someone else here who said, we'll just, we'll just get taxes when we need them if there is an emergency, that's not really possible. Just as, just as it's not possible for us as individuals to come and suddenly come up with $500,000 if we have something horrible happen in our families, you don't take a City of Phoenix budget and suddenly replenish it. You need the reserve there. But beyond that, I think, I appreciate most the vision that I've heard. I also went to a lot of the budget hearings throughout the city. We're talking a lot about infrastructure, that's really important. But it's time to have a bigger vision about our city. Now is the time. We're in a healthy frame of the economy. And has anybody seen this article? This was about two weeks ago, New York Times, half-page article. This is not about sports. This is not about development. This is not about growth. All those things are good in the City of Phoenix. This is about the ballet, Ballet Arizona. This arts writer says, I've visited Ballet Arizona five times now. And they have one of the most enterprising companies anywhere. This budget supports those kinds of things that help our city be a city worth living in. Not only because the pipes are working and the water is flowing, but because we have something that draws economic development and keeps our young people here and keeps our young people engaged in things that are better than criminal activities.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trailer, for your testimony and for your leadership on the Arts Commission. Ms. Judy Giles, followed by Gary Egan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council and Mr. City Manager. I'm Judy Giles, President of the Friends of Phoenix Public Art. And I, along with all of our board members, want to urge you to vote yes on the property tax increase. As you know, the Phoenix Public Art Program has won national awards and accolades over the last 30 years. But there is one issue we are in dire need of addressing, and that is maintenance and restoration of those fabulous projects. The additional amounts in the budget for grants and maintenance will be well-used if you vote to increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Giles. Gary Egan will be the next speaker, followed by Jenny Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'm here in favor of the tax increase levy. If we've only had one tax increase in 20 years, I think that's something you'd be proud of. I remember at the mayor, the mayor and city council, one of the other hearings, city manager looked at the other cities surrounding in the valley. And we, by all other standards, have the lowest tax base and we provide some of the best services. I think we have a lot to be proud of as the sixth-largest city. But at the same time, the arts in the city have been cut significantly. We talk about growth, we talk about restoring the economic viability of the city. However, the arts continue to be cut. They seem to be a target for many people. During all these cuts through the last several years, one of the things the Phoenix Art Museum has had to do, we had to go out and seek funds so we could get Title I funding. The students no longer have arts education in the school. We provide it. We provide the buses, we provide the docents, we provide the education corps to provide that funding. My colleague spoke about the amount of citizens that come to the museum. It's over a quarter million people. And more than half of those are free. We make that available free to the city. One of the things that if this budget is not passed, I don't think that has been very clearly stated, the proposal, if it is not passed, cuts $230,000 out of our budget that the city supports right now. As a city of our size, we are one of the most underfunded cities in the arts. We look at our comparable cities and we spend less than a dollar on every citizen in the arts. It enriches lives, provides students, gives balance. And actually, if you don't provide that and give a balanced citizen, either with youth programs or citizens and seniors, then you run the cost of paying for it in other areas. I would very much ask the council to do their duty and support the budget and the tax levy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Egan. Jenny Strickland is next, followed by Richard Ray. Jenny Strickland, is Ms. Strickland here? Is she downstairs? I'll hold the card and see if she's able to, if she's coming up from downstairs. Mr. Richard Ray. And then he'll be followed by Ken Crane, President of Phoenix Law Enforcement Association.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff. You've probably seen the best budget process that has ever been done in the City of Phoenix since I've been involved and where any of you have been involved. What Jeff has done has been amazing. What Ed has done has been phenomenal. And I think that they deserve a tremendous amount of support. And let me go on to the more specific. Not a single one of you was forced to become a city council person, as far as I know. Not, well, I'm not sure, but Deborah. No, I don't think any of you were made to become this. But what you did is you agreed to step forth and become leaders. And becoming a leader means that you have to start to make those tough decisions. This particular matter, this budget increase, of which I'm in favor, is one that is vitally important. Six years ago, we had a problem. We balanced the budget on the backs of the employees. We didn't add staff, we cut people. We went from nearly 18,000 to around 14,000. We did, we being people that were trying to help the city, we did as much as we could to assist. Did we do everything and did we get rid of some of the things that Councilman Waring doesn't like? No. Did we get rid of everything that wasn't quite right? No. Because we had people that were themselves saying, those are important. But what we do need to do, and it's vitally important, is that we need to restore and then take care of our people. We need to make sure that we're doing the right way. Let's make sure, and this, I think it's been passed over a little bit too lightly, let's make sure that that, that rating of our bonds remains as high as it is because it will pay dividends year after year or in lower interest rates. It's vitally important that we do this, and I really would appreciate that, that you would all vote for it. I don't expect, I know, Sal, I know you won't, but I would really appreciate you all would. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray, for your testimony. Next speaker will be Ken Crane, President of Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. There are some additional cards here, so you are able to go a little over the time period. The speaker after Mr. Crane will be Steve Burline, President of United Phoenix Firefighters, Local 93. President Crane.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. Ken Crane, on behalf of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, who represent about 2,200 rank-and-file Phoenix police officers. Only weeks after signing a three-year contract with the city for full restoration and concessions, Phoenix police officers thought they could breathe a little easier. That was short-lived. We're now told that vital funding in the form of a floating property tax may not be approved. We should leave the city with a $37 million deficit. We're told if it can't be corrected, hiring and promotion for public safety will have to be frozen. This is absolutely astounding when one considers the current budget had to be voted on three times in the last eight to nine weeks. And the council voted knowing full well, the budget as written would be contingent on a property tax increase to have a balanced budget. We've now heard that some on the council are balking at approving this modest tax increase. Just as important though, is the fact that just weeks ago, approximately 14 citywide budget hearings were held where numerous citizens voiced their support for a bump to the property tax. There is some opposition, but as Ms. Rogers alluded to, there was over a 90% approval rate for this. Floating secondary property tax at a rate of about $4.25 a month on the average Phoenix home equates to roughly $50 a year tax increase, which is realistic and reasonable. And floating the tax makes sense. The lower your property value, the less tax, and so on. Engaging in partisan politics doesn't help the city or keep public safety healthy. Worrying about who might be the next mayor, who might get voted in or out of office over a meager tax increase isn't going to help the city or keep public safety healthy. The men and women who daily put their lives on the line need to know their council supports them, has their backs, and will ensure the budget is financed in a manner that will guarantee solvency and can ensure that both police and fire can continue to hire much-needed personnel to properly serve the citizens of Phoenix. I'd ask you to keep in mind that the Phoenix PD is still down, probably at least 600 officers. And many don't understand what a monumental task it is to get hiring ramped back up in an organization this large after an almost seven-year dry spell of not having hired people. Our Employment Services Bureau has had to be ramped up and restaffed with background investigators. Our field training officer squads had to be reformed and retrained to prepare to receive new officers in training. Our training academy had to be ramped up and properly staffed with training personnel to be able to receive new recruits. We've had to pull dozens and dozens of personnel out of key positions on the department to re-energize and staff the positions needed to conduct hiring. And after all that, we just begin to get personnel through the academy at a regular rate. It takes 18 weeks to get somebody through the academy, followed by a four-week post-academy, followed by a 16-week field training program. That's nine and a half months of training just to become a solo-capable officer. It takes another year of exposure just to become proficient in the job. It's a lengthy process to produce an employee that has a required skill set to do this job properly. All of this time-consuming and expensive effort by the city and the police department to get much-needed manpower on the streets, only now to be told that hiring and promotions will have to be frozen? Are we supposed to shut down and mothball the training program? And if so, for how long? This course of action is unacceptable. One person I talked to yesterday described this whole process as like a flywheel on a giant machine. It takes a lot of time, energy, and effort to get that flywheel up to speed. It takes time, energy, and effort to put the brakes on it. And it takes time, energy, and effort to spool it back up and get it started again. We cannot have our public safety organizations being jerked around on the end of a chain due to political gamesmanship, nor should the publicly served suffer a lack of police or fire services due to the same. Public safety is the linchpin of any vibrant city. And without effective and efficient public safety, citizens and businesses don't want to live here. They don't want to come here. And it's a cyclical downward spiral. I would implore all of you to do the right thing, float the property tax to ensure the budget's properly funded and to ensure our first responders have proper staffing to do their jobs safely. I would also implore all of you to do the right thing to ensure the continued safety of the citizens of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Crane, for your testimony. Next speaker will be Steve Burline, President of United Phoenix Firefighters. There was also some additional time because you, some people donated. There was also some additional time because you, some people donated time to you. President Burline.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. In March, first of all, I'd like to really thank everyone for recognizing the fact that instead of floating a property tax in 2010, we cut the wages and benefits of employees, all of my members, police officers, firefighters, mechanics. 2012, same thing. 2014, same thing. We've seen concessions for six years, and they've been deep, and they've hurt all of us. Firefighters still makes, starts at around $15, $16 an hour. Nobody's getting rich doing what we do. But in March, we had community budget hearings. We asked all of our firefighters to attend these 15 meetings throughout the community. Our primary concern at the time was option number five, which included significant cuts to the fire department, all departments. We were pleased to find out, all around the community, in every one of these districts, there was overwhelming support for option number one. And option number one needed additional funding, and that funding was going to be this floating property tax. We're finally doing the right thing. Just the other day, I had to call on my firefighters again. Many of them got off of their 24-hour shift at 8:00 this morning to show up to this meeting because there's going to be a vote, and I want all of you to look these firefighters in the eye when you make this vote. Because if you vote no on this item, you are freezing hirings and promotions for all police officers and firefighters. And I'm telling you, as of January, we are already down 70 firefighters and running an additional 40,000 calls a year in the city of Phoenix. Since January to July 1st, we've had an additional 75 firefighters retire. We are short. We are trying to keep up with what we are running short. We cannot afford to go one week with freezing hiring or freezing promotions. We have too many firefighters sitting in the captain's seat today. We have too many firefighters driving fire trucks, sitting in the engineer's seat. We need those promotions to just keep our heads above water. That's all we're asking for. So we encourage you to vote yes on this floating property tax. Now, I've heard today that it's a difficult decision. I'm sorry, but stepping off a roof of a burning house, onto a roof of a burning house where you may die is a difficult decision. Going into a house fire where you have to decide if you're going to go left or right to rescue those victims that are waiting to be rescued is a difficult decision. These police officers, when to draw your weapon, that's a difficult decision. We're sitting in this room, this nice air-conditioning room, protected by these police officers. This isn't a difficult decision, folks. This is the right decision. Please vote yes on this floating property tax. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, President Burline. We have a few other cards not wishing to speak. I'll just read them off very quickly, so it's there for the record. Mr. James Dibler is in favor. Cynthia McCoskey is opposed. Dana Medlin in favor. Don Jogan Ward in favor. Ed Burline in favor. Justin White in favor. Greg Garcia in favor. Andres Guerrero in favor. John Duffy in favor. Eddie Burline in favor. Tanika Broughton in favor. Benjamin Taylor in favor. Emilio Rivera in favor. We had one card just come in wishing to speak. Was that Ben Taylor? Did you wish to speak, Mr. Taylor? Okay, good, please, come forward.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I've been here to, you know, a lot of the previous meetings testified, so I'll keep it quickly. I'm really in favor of this. I'm an attorney here. I practice right across the street in the city courthouse, and I see a lot of the police officers, the staff, and they really need this budget, you know, for a financial increase in their income. So the budget was passed already. Please support the funding of the budget, and again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, for your testimony here today and your active leadership throughout the process. I have no other cards on this public hearing. Is anyone else here wishing to provide testimony on item number two on today's agenda? Does somebody else want to come in? We've someone grabbed the card from Reverend Mopin, and there's one other individual wishing to speak as well.
I put one in, I think it was a white card, so my mistake.
All right, that's all right.
I'm here, but I'm ready to go on vacation, too, just like you guys.
Reverend Mopin, yes, your card, your original card was a, the card with the color, "Not Wishing to Speak." I was shocked, so we've corrected it to the correct card so you could speak.
In favor, conditionally, and I tell you what it's about. It's not the pay of more resources for police and fire. We definitely need that. To me, it's about fairness and priorities. We're the six, top of the six largest cities in America with respect to credit rating, but with poverty, we're number three in the top 25. So that means we've got close to half a million people in this city that are living under the federal poverty level. If there's two income earners in the home, that's 15,500 some odd dollars. Any increase in their costs for living is very difficult. So I would ask the city council, if you're going to do this, to examine what's been done in Lansing and St. Louis and parts of, other parts of the country, and that is create an exemption, a poverty exemption, for people who are living in the city under the federal poverty level. If a homeowner can prove that they're living under the federal poverty level, I think it would be fair to exempt them from this, and I think that's the right thing to do. Yeah, I'm a Democrat, a lot of you on the council are. We believe in taxing and spending responsibly, but there are people who can't afford it. So what are we going to do for them? We heard a lot of their cries when we were dealing with the food tax, and now we need to do the same thing here. The other thing is priorities. This is going to pay for body cameras on police, and we certainly need that, but the public asked for sensitivity and diversity training before they asked for body cameras. And, you know, until you have that training, the additional cameras aren't necessarily going to do anything to stop any of the issues we're having between police and the community. You just approved a $700,000 settlement with the family of Michelle Cousseau. That's a pretty hefty price tag to pay for praise from Loretta Lynch about mental health training. So we've got to pay for the training, you've got to make sure the priorities are together. Just in the last week, you know, $10 million for the recycling thing in New York, you got $300,000 to associations going out, you've got all this money going out. So I'm just saying, let's do it, but make sure the priorities are in order, and if you have a heart, if you have a conscience, please. I think Councilwoman Gallego, I don't see her, but she wanted to see if there were any ways to get this done without hurting people. One of the ways to do that is to come up with a poverty exemption for households that are owned by people who are living under the federal poverty level. Other cities are doing it. I encourage you to do the same.
Thank you very much, Reverend Mopin. Next speaker is Mr. Sean McCarthy, representing Atra.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton, City Councilmembers. Sean McCarthy with the Arizona Tax Research Association, here today to speak, opposed to the tax increase. Much is spoken in these chambers about the difficulties facing your constituents, and one fact situation that's not often discussed is the person that pays their property tax in full, the elderly person that owns their home outright pays one check or the business owner. This is a pretty tough time every October and then March when you make those payments. And when you don't have enough, you go into debt because you don't want to lose your home. You take out debt to pay your property taxes. And so if you're knowing that that is the fact situation, if you're going to be raising property taxes, it better be for the very best of reasons. And this is not a modest tax increase. It's a 19% tax increase. It's massive. And $37 million doesn't come from cups of coffee, okay? It comes from taxpayers around the city of Phoenix. I just looked up today, just for one example, Bimbo Bakery, it's on Van Buren and Grand Avenue, small business, employees probably dozens of people, I don't know them, but their tax increase will be about $900 next year. So their employees will have to forego their pay restoration this year, I suppose. These are real tax increases that face small business owners and homeowners alike. Regrettably, staff only provided you a false choice for this budget. They said, "It's either devastate city services or raise taxes, and you have no other choice." And they held the gun to the head of public service. That is a false choice. Interestingly enough, we support floating the tax rate. That is good public policy. However, before you float the tax rate, we ought to get credit for what was already paid. During the boom years, over $300 million was overcollected, money that was overcollected beyond the debt service. That's what you've been using to walk down the rate over the last several years. This is not a rainy day fund, okay? This is not an emergency fund. That money can only be used for the defecence of bonds. That money should get spent. The six to nine months in reserve is essentially a made-up number. There is no legal justification for it or financial. The reason the bondholders suggested keeping reserve is because you said we are not moving it beyond $1.82. You can't have it both ways. You cannot say we're going to float the tax rate but then also leave the cash. It's one or the other, and so taxpayers ought to get credit for that money that they have already spent. You don't have to cut the budget one penny.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCarthy, representing Arizona Tax Research Association. All right, once again, I'll ask, because I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak before this council. I have no other cards for citizens wishing to speak for this council. Is anyone else here wishing to provide testimony to this council on item number two? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. I'll now turn it over to Councilman Michael Nowakowski to see if there's a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the property tax levy for 2016 to 2017 and also to reverse the order of the roll call.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Now I'll open up to members of the council if they have any comments on Councilman Nowakowski's motion. All right, I'll just, I will be supporting the motion, and I'd like to explain my reasons why. One of the top priorities we have had here in the city of Phoenix is to deliver high-quality services that our residents need while keeping taxes as low as possible, particularly during the toughest economic times. Since 2010, property values have gone down, and while almost every other city in the valley and Maricopa County as well have floated the property tax rate, Phoenix as of yet has not. In fact, Phoenix has not adjusted the property tax rate for 21 years. The amount Phoenix collects from property taxes went down more than $90 million from 2010 to last year. As a percentage, that's the most significant drop of any city or the county government during that period. By keeping the rate the same, we have provided more than $200 million of tax relief to our residents during that period of time. The proposal today would float the city property tax rate, but it keeps the tax burden much lower than it was in 2010. Just a few years ago, the average Phoenix property owner's tax bill was over $400 per year, $407 per year. Under this proposal, it will be $93 lower than that. Let me repeat that. Under this proposal, the average Phoenix taxpayer will pay nearly $100 less than just a few years ago. This proposal does keep taxes low. Not only does it keep taxes low, it puts us on a path towards more responsible budgeting. It's not just me who thinks so. Conservative members of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors have gone on record defending the exact practice that we're talking here today, floating the property tax rate. And I think it's time that the city of Phoenix join our region, Maricopa County, most of the other cities in the valley, in adopting this responsible budget practice. And I also want to note that there's a reason we could deliver significant tax relief for so long. We have repeatedly pushed to tighten our belts here in Phoenix. We have worked over a number of years to make our government smaller and more efficient, and at the same time, we have delivered top-notch services. Phoenix has done more with less. We have cut this city government by nearly 3,000 employees. Today, we have the smallest per capita government in the city of Phoenix since 1970. We've adopted sweeping pension reforms that will save taxpayers over $1.1 billion over 25 years. That's billion with a B. So I'm proud of the reforms that this city has made. I'm proud that we have eased the burden on taxpayers. We will continue to do that, and our taxpayers will continue to pay less, but we also have to make key investments in our city, and that starts with putting more police officers, more firefighters on the streets of the city of Phoenix. With today's vote, we are deciding whether we will make strategic investments in public safety and pay for the services that myself and five of my colleagues supported when we voted for the budget just a few weeks ago. Without this revenue, the budget is null and void. I'll have no choice but to call this council in a special session next week to outline cuts to put this budget into balance. It's not a scare tactic, it's a fact. It's a fact of budgeting. Those cuts unavoidably have to include public safety. We'll have to freeze our plan to hire more police officers and outfit them with body-worn cameras. The argument that Phoenix can meet its budgetary obligations by spending its reserve fund, in my opinion, and in the opinion of our experts we heard here today, is misguided and fiscally irresponsible. We maintain a healthy reserve fund for a very good reason. Aside from helping us to be prepared for another downturn, our credit rating depends on this fiscally sound strategy. Phoenix does have the highest credit rating of all the largest cities in the United States of America. We should all want to keep it. However, both Moody's and S&amp;P have cited our reserve fund as a key reason for our stellar credit rating, and both have explicitly warned us not to deplete it. S&amp;P recently said, "If the city were to significantly deplete reserves or lapse into structural imbalance, we would take negative rating action." I believe that the budget that we passed was a responsible budget that provides vital services that our residents need: public safety, parks, arts, libraries, among so many others. And now it's time for this council to vote for the revenue that will make that budget a reality, and I will be supporting Councilman Nowakowski's motion. I'll now turn to any other council members, if they have any, Councilman Waring, please.
Just a couple of points respond, I made some of my points earlier, but a couple of points responding to the things people said up at the podium. It got mentioned by Greta Rogers and the two union leaders about the public meetings, which I attend the public meetings to, and they are important, and it's important that people go, and I wish more people did. Somebody, it might have been Steve Burline, but it could have been Ken Crane, said 90-plus percent of the people who went to those meetings, remember it was 200 to 3, are for this. That's not 90%, that's 98.5%. So that's fantastic. Do you know what percentage those 203 people represent of Phoenix's 1.5 million population? Greta Rogers, I think, indicated that maybe myself and Sal are not representing people because we don't listen to those 203 people, a few of whom live in my district, some of whom probably don't even live in the city, a lot of whom are probably city employees who are basically advocating for their own pay raise, as well they should. I'm surprised every city employee doesn't go, but regardless, they don't, 203 people. Well, our districts are 200,000 people each. I got 76% of the vote in my last election, so maybe I'm representing somebody. So that was the most ridiculous thing I've heard in quite some time, that somehow, by not siding with the 203 and ignoring the will of the 200,000, maybe that wasn't the best thought-out argument I've ever heard. I will say this, there was discussion, I think it was maybe Ken Crane, talked about how hard it's been to get votes for this. Why? There was drama, backdoor drama, why? This council is made up of six Democrats and three Republicans. Democrats, I think, generally speaking, tax increases, maybe not so bad. Us Republicans take a more cautionary view of the tax increase issue. One of the Republicans on the council is, I believe, based on the comments, voting for it. So that's seven to two, you would think. So why all the drama? Because outside this room, and maybe those 203 people, some of whom couldn't be here today, this thing is radioactive. Why? Because, as Sean McCarthy noted, a lot of business owners, we had a few business owners show up, it's an issue. Mr. Egan talked about, "There's been one tax increase in 20 years." He must have come in late and missed it when I said we've raised sales taxes last year, water rate this spring, talked about raising again today, but just did the one this spring, raise the fees at the airport, and now this. That's four big tax increases in 10 months. So it's not one in 20 years, it's four in 10 months. Mr. Haddad, and they're entitled to their opinion, I'm not saying this critically, I'm just repeating what I heard, talked about, "This is a good tax because it's progressive." Fine. People can't move, they can't sell their houses, so they're stuck, they got to pay it. We got them. Unlike sales taxes, where when we raise the sales taxes, people go to other states or countries or whatever, particularly in the internet age, to buy their stuff. I know people who are doing it, you all do too, if you're intellectually honest about it. People will flee higher taxation. It's what they do. Our country fled- Our country fled another government that was trying to increase taxes willy-nilly as well. So, just food for thought. So I guess it's good for the city that it's harder to sell your house than it is to buy your car someplace else, but I'm not sure that was the best argument for why this makes sense. To me, that seems a little unfair. We're really going to stick it to you where you can't do anything about it. So that's an issue. A lot was said about commitments. So there was talk about commitments regarding what labor groups in the city worked out before my time on the council. I wasn't here, don't really, I've heard a lot about it, don't know what the discussion was exactly, or what promises were made to who. But then, there was a lot of talk in the paper about potentially raiding the fund, the stadium fund, to maybe not have to make this vote today, because again, this vote today is kind of a tough one, actually. What about that commitment? Nobody seemed to mind opening it up to do a new hotel. I wasn't on the council then, but I would have adamantly opposed, and that thing was a fiasco. So nicely done, previous council members who supported it. But regardless, commitments here seem to be a little bit, eh, if it's expedient for us, then we'll do it, but if not, then we'll just cast that aside. Crisis situation, as I mentioned earlier, different story. 2007 to 2010, you're just trying to survive every day. Understand. But this is not a crisis situation. I think it was Mr. McGarrigan, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, said, you know, "The economy's not good." So I didn't want him, if he's still here, to misunderstand. I'm not saying the economy is great, or that everybody is thriving, or is as good as it was before the crash. But for Phoenix City Government it is. Keep raising taxes, your revenue keeps going up. This is record revenue. It's record revenue, year after year, the last few years. And how many taxes did I say we increased? And they had to raise taxes and fees in 2014 to make that budget too. So we're hardly in a stellar situation. It is just, it is frustrating to see. It's frustrating that another water tax was put on this agenda and then withdrawn, but you can see where it's going. Expect that one next. So, it's just things to think about. I just wanted to respond to some of the things I had heard before. But four big tax increases in 10 months, and in a couple of years with the pension increases, and please keep in mind, all these projections assume a good economy. All these projections assume that things are going to be fine. I mentioned earlier what happened in, I guess, 2013 when David Cavassos left. The budget was built on projections that were pie in the sky. I criticized them when they were made, and then council just went ahead and took the recommendation to go ahead and do the budget, and then complained vociferously about Cavassos when he left. I thought that was grossly unfair. But regardless, that's what happened. You know, what happens if the economy crashes? We now have three-year labor contracts, so the labor contract issue is settled, but not for taxpayers. If we fall short, they're going to have to make up the difference. Argued vociferously against it, my, I believed wise counsel was not accepted. But the taxpayer is really, really going to get hit hard if there is a downturn any time in the next couple of years. We don't have any cushion, the pension costs keep going up. I think you said it was an extra $36 million just this year. Our budget's only $1.1 billion, $1.2 billion, so that's a pretty big percentage. It is very worrisome that these are the mechanisms that are used, and not looking at, wow, we're spending a lot on lobbyists. Now, I do, I think Mr. Climen got up and he took the pro-lobber side. I wonder if any of us up here want to jump on that bandwagon and say, "You know what? Part of this tax increase today is going to fund a big lobbying team and a lot of trips to DC." I don't know how politically popular that would be. I'm not sure how many people would go stand on a soapbox, or pretend they're Abe Lincoln and get up and speak in a park and talk about, "That's what we do with your money." How thrilled are you about that? I don't think people are going to be very thrilled. Julie Waters and her team, the communication staff, does a great job, but $2.1 million? I mean, I don't know. We're kind of our own communication and lobbying team up here. I go to the legislature all the time. Sal, they actually got a restraining order, so it's, sorry, Sal, I couldn't resist, I have to take one dig. So, just some things to think about. I am adamantly opposed to this. I understand the arguments that were made. I do respect everybody's opinion. They got elected too, so they're representing constituencies as well. I just think some of these decisions and some of the indications for the future about some of these funds and so forth are worrisome to me, and I'm afraid things are going to get worse before they get better for the taxpayer. So, thank you for the time, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's participated in our budget process, especially the mayor and my council colleagues. Would like to thank the people who helped me study this issue. I had over 40 meetings with a variety of individuals, including municipal budget experts, people with expertise in rating agencies, department heads, people from other cities, to really look long and hard at this particular issue. I put forward a wide variety of ideas, which were not successful. I looked at, for example, body cameras are a priority for me. We have a pretty significant balance with our RICO and court awards. Local court awards fund balance is $7 million, federal justice court awards balance $2.2 million, federal treasury courts award fund balance $600,000. They are allocated for a variety of different expenditures, which were not very visible in the budget process, all worthwhile, but to me, not all necessarily more important. And it would have been good to have dialogue about these items. Law enforcement, nonprofit support, rifles, professional standards move, there's a contingency of $963,000 in the funds. So I think we could have done a lot without using general fund dollars that we decided not to do. I also did look long and hard at the sports facility fund. We have money set aside to give us the option to do future sports investments. At least at the budget hearings I attended, I heard particularly from employees that that was not something they wanted us to see, or at least that it should not be at the top of the list of priorities. We're quite popular in the city of Phoenix with different professional sports organizations. A wide variety of sports organizations have approached the city for funding. Right now, that's just not my top priority. I would love to see us do more to reduce the impact of this tax increase. I do believe that some revenue is appropriate, but not all that is in this budget right now. On lobbyists, I do think some of our lobbyists have been enormously important. When I was first elected, our government affairs team helped get a presidential disaster declaration. It was my first year and our emergency management director's first year. None of us had the experience to have gone through a presidential disaster declaration. It just wasn't expertise we had, but our government affairs team had worked with other communities and was very helpful in that, so it paid off in a big way. There are some government affairs expenditures that I could live without. As I watched CNN this weekend, Jan Brewer was on defending Donald Trump and his statements that I perceived to be racist about a federal judge. She is a consultant for a law firm we have on retainer. I think they do good work, but it is not consistent with my personal values, and so that's expenditures that I could do without. So, I really believe that we could pass a budget that protects public safety, arts programs, and the items mentioned in here without such a significant property tax increase, and so I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Other comments by members of this council? Councilwoman Stark. Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do support restoring the wages of our staff. They really do provide a vital service to everyone in the city of Phoenix. However, I'm willing to go into a special session and talk about cutting our budget. I think there are things we can look at. I agree with Councilman Waring. We do have expenses in lobbying, memberships. I think we should talk about procurement. I remember many years ago, when I was an employee here, and Councilman Waring did question me about an expenditure that my department needed. It was for laptops that were $4,000 apiece, where I'm sure we could probably have bought them somewhere else for $1,000. So I agree, there's a lot of things we need to look at to cut expenses. I have had the opportunity to be out in my district, talking to numerous constituents, and overridingly, the people do not support an increase in their property taxes, so I will be voting no.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman Stark. Any other comments by members of the council, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues here, especially the ones that are voting no on this. It is an illogical thing, if you just listened to what was occurring here. The city of Phoenix has the highest revenue it's ever had in its lifetime, and a $60 million surplus, and they're asking for a tax increase? It's illogical. I mean, no matter what you heard, all the feel-good stuff that you heard here today, at the end of the day, it doesn't make sense. It's illogical to do this. The other thing for the police and firefighters that are out here, I very much respect everything that you've done and everything that you do. My children, when they see a police officer, when they see a firefighter, a person in military, they go up to those individuals and say, "Thank you for protecting us." I mean, that is the type of household that we have. My wife and I run our household this way. But, the fact of the matter is, I feel bad for you, you're constantly being thrown under the bus by individuals, that there's always this threat of cutting police and fire. If the city of Phoenix had a true strategic plan, looked at what is critical, what isn't critical, you would be funded at a much higher level than you would be today if we went through that simple process of making that determination. Some of us have been asking for that up here. Hopefully, it helps drive toward that direction. But at the end of the day, the question that the public would always have to ask is, "Is that police officer, is that firefighter more important?" And not to diminish people that are pushing the art projects, but what is more important? A or B? That is a determination we have to make here at the city of Phoenix. We haven't gone through that process, given the fact that the city of Phoenix spent almost $10 million last week alone studying and making sure, informing the public of trash, recycling. It's just not logical to do those types of things. None of these things make sense. The fact of the matter is, if this property tax does pass for any reason, a small business owner, on average, will pay about $630 more a year in their taxes. How does a dry cleaning company do that? How do you work? Especially a small business owner, let's say a coffee shop, not a Starbucks, but a coffee shop, that lives day-to-day, cup to cup. Oh, excuse me, because I want to show this. That's why I was an offensive player, an offensive tackle instead of an end. I can't catch a ball. But, you know, a business owner that has a coffee shop, lives day-to-day, and is one cup away from either making it or not. They always use coffee as an example, but what they don't use as an example is the fact that that small business owner is one cup away from losing their business, their American dream, everything that they've worked hard for. And these types of taxes, and Councilman Waring has done an excellent job of outlining this, but the property tax, this is not a one-off. The property tax, the water tax, the airport tax, day in and day out, the city of Phoenix in the last four or five months has been pushing these huge taxes on the public. At some time, enough is enough. It's time to stop. It's time to start putting our feet down and start saying that the taxpayers need to be protected here. They need to be protected. And that is our job. Our job is to protect you. We need to figure out what is, what is not critical, and we need to figure out that quickly and start moving in that direction. That has to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Obviously, as city manager, we are on the first day of July, that has very important legal implications for the city of Phoenix. We are going to take a vote here in just a few minutes, but, and I don't know which way the vote's going to go, but if the vote were to be rejected of the proposal by Councilman Nowakowski, under our city charter and ordinances, what are the legal implications?
Specifically, the legal implications, I'll leave that to the city attorney, but generally speaking...
What is your layman's interpretation of the legal implication?
My layman's interpretation, thank you. That's what I'll give you. We have a budget. The council has approved this budget. This budget has set a certain level of spending on specific things. They've been mentioned here, body cameras, et cetera. If the property tax levy doesn't pass, we do not have the resources to implement that budget, and therefore, we would have to come back, both to have a property tax levy of any kind, and to right-size the budget to the revenues available, and we should do that as soon as possible. In terms of myself, a city manager, if that were the direction from the council today, I would direct our department heads immediately to stop any hiring or non-life safety spending until the council resolves the issue of what level of services we provide with the resources made available. So I would recommend, Mayor, that we come back as fast as possible next week to get a resolution, if this were not successful.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments for City Mayor, Councilman Waring, please?
So, you and I have talked about that very scenario. My understanding is we'd wind up doing that today. I believe, but I guess if it's next week, it's next week if you think that's advisable. Obviously, I highlighted some things that I think are personally pretty wasteful. A couple other people chimed in, saying that at least they might agree with me at some level, that some of those things might be addressed if we did come back. So, food for thought there. I would also say this, when we spoke, I believe you had a list of $44 million in new items. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, since the trial budget in March, there has been what has been called by some people here, option five. It was option five in the public item that was distributed. I've got one here somewhere. Well, I won't try to find it. And that listed the items that we would suggest, from which we would suggest any budget cuts. That list that's been out there for three months, total $44 million. That's correct.
And you said we'd have to, my recollection of conversation, it's been a while now, but we talked about it several times, I think you said we'd have to find $37 million. Obviously, we could add in some of the things that I mentioned, so maybe it's $34 million, or $33, or something like that. That was all new spending, right?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I'm sorry, that was your question. No, that list was all existing spending. So actually, the first thing, as the city manager, I would recommend was that we would stop all the new spending.
New spending.
That's about $9.5 million. That's the body cameras, that's the electronic patient records, that's the air qualities, specialist arts.
It's everything that's not the pay raises.
Everything except the pay increases, or pay restorations, which were now codified in contracts. Those would be the first things that we would need to, that I would recommend we stop in the current budget.
So if this didn't pass today, to the mayor's point, I don't know what's going to happen either, but it's really exciting, not knowing. So I guess the question is, the union groups get paid regardless, that's done. That was my point earlier about what if there's a downturn, or whatever, the contracts are the contracts, they've gone into effect, so that's not what we're talking about. We're now talking about the new $9.5 million, and you've got to find a total of 37.
That's correct.
So the new spending stop gets you down to 28 or 27.5, something like that.
That's correct.
Ballpark. I've given you a few million dollars in ideas here. Are you telling me in a 1.22, I think it was 1.22, Jeff, right? Wasn't that the number, 1.22 billion-dollar budget? We can't find another $25 million in either efficiency savings and so forth, as Deborah Stark noted, and I appreciate that, because we worked together when she was a staffer here, before she left to go over to the county. Her and Bill Gates, makes you shake your head. But I appreciated her bringing, because I do remember that example. We were paying like triple or quadruple, or we're trying to anyway, by trying, I mean the city, what we needed to. I believe you can go through this budget, 25% is a pretty small, 25 million is a pretty small percentage of 1.22 billion, and do something with it. I gave just a few examples, I've certainly given more over the years. I just believe we're not looking hard enough, number one. Considering that we're asking taxpayers to fund all this, I thought we could have looked harder. But number two, you know, it sounded as soon as I said something about a couple of these things, people were happy to throw it under the bus. So how sacrosanct really is it? So, I wouldn't mind having an extra week under some duress, and going back and reevaluating the importance of this, because if there are not the votes here on a council that really is six to three Democrat for a tax increase, I guess I'd have to question, "When is it going to be able to pass?" Which brings me to another point.
And, Councilman, the rating agencies will ask the very same question.
So, it seems like cutting would be probably the more sensible solution at that point. Again, not the union groups, that's done. So I guess, at what point could we do another vote on the tax increase if people said, "No, I just, I can't make these cuts, I like the lobbyists too much, so I don't want to cut anything else, I want to have the new programs, I'm willing to now own it." When does that vote happen? Or is it possible to have it happen, given that there are a lot of... Or is it possible to have it happen, given that there are a lot of, as Councilman DeCecio mentioned, a lot of requirements from the state after the food tax episode a few years ago? Don't we have 60-day triggers, we got to give notice and so forth? This would be a new vote. Do we have to go through that process again? And if so, that takes you into late August, early September.
Mr. City Manager, it's a variation, same question, but it deserves a answer. Depending on the outcome of today's vote, it's important that the council members know the full implications of today's decision. What would you recommend about a course of procedure moving forward?
Well, never in the history of the city of Phoenix that I'm aware of has the council not adopted a property tax levy. So we are in, we would be in absolutely uncharted territory. I believe the way we, we have posted appropriately the property tax and other tax levies that returning next week, the council could vote on, we have to vote on a property tax levy. We have to have one. And so we would, we would post that for a special meeting next week, as well as the budget cuts required.
Can I ask this question?
Councilman Waring, you may, please.
We have a, so we have a motion. We haven't voted, obviously. Could a substitute be made to go back to the current status quo?
I think, first I think...
A question for the chair and the city attorney.
Yeah.
And the implication is we don't have the votes to pass.
If we don't, my understanding is that we don't vote today to support the city manager's recommendation. By default, it would be, at least until we vote for a new one, it would be the existing levy.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. In Phoenix Code Section 219, it says the council shall finally adopt the levy by a certain date, and the levy has to be, quote, "sufficient to raise the amount estimated in the budget," close quote. So you can't really adopt less than the amount sufficient to do that without, at the same time, having a discussion about cutting the budget.
So... Councilman Waring, do you have any additional questions?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious, if it, if it doesn't pass, it sounds like we have to pass something today. I mean, I don't know how you make people vote for something, but is that what you're saying?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, Section 219 contemplates that the decisions about the budget will have been made earlier in the budget hearings, and that the decision with respect to the levy is an administrative decision that is, has to be made within a certain timeframe, in this case, before July 26th, and that that administrative decision has to be commensurate with the budget. In other words, quote, "sufficient to raise the amount estimated in the budget," close quote. And if it's not sufficient to do that, then, as the mayor has suggested, it would appear to me that legally you'd have to have a hearing at which budget cuts were then imposed so that you could adopt a levy that was commensurate with the budget.
So basically, the way I would work is if this failed today, you have until July 26th, I think was the date you gave?
That, that's the date provided in our operating code. That's right.
The city manager, of course, would recognize, as soon as the vote was taken, we're running a deficit, he would put in his emergency measures. If the votes were not found between now and July 26th, there is a little opportunity for wiggle room, more than it sounded like initially. So there is a little bit of time, assuming the city manager can put his emergency, would put his emergency stuff into place. So we could have a discussion about what's in this current budget, how seriously we all take every single line item, a little more so than has been the case before, because now we have this real hard deadline. There will be a lot of public and media pressure about this, because we are in uncharted territory. I think sometimes duress can, can wring out good decisions from people, and at some point, we could adopt the current levy, we could keep the current system setup, however you want to phrase it, and then make cuts that have been found and identified in the intervening 26 days. That is a scenario that could happen, should this fail today. So it's not like calamity today. There is an opportunity to reevaluate our priorities, which I would appreciate, actually.
Councilman DeCecio, do you have additional comments? And Councilman Williams, please.
I do, Mayor. It, it seems to me that it's logical for this public body to spend the next 26 days to find ways to protect the taxpayers. It's logical to do that, and doesn't necessarily need to be cuts. I believe that there's an insane amount of money in the city of Phoenix. It's just an incredible amount of money that's there that we could use to pay off whatever it is that the city of Phoenix thinks that they need to do. It doesn't have to be cuts. I'm going to make that very clear. It does not have to be. City Phoenix is flush with cash. It has more money than it's ever had in its history. I don't think it's illogical for us to ask, I'm going to make a separate motion that we wait and we go through and we work harder, we put our pencils to the drawing board or to the, pen to paper and start working for the next month. Instead of taking a break, the least the taxpayer should expect out of us is that we work through the summer and pull something together. So I'm going to put an alternative motion that we kill this tax increase and wait until, what is it going to be, July 26th that we need to go through? That you should expect the politicians to work at this harder than pushing out a vote today.
Second.
Second. Till what, July 25th or 4th, whatever date that is? Twenty, let's make it the week 22nd, July 22nd. So we're going to work on it. That's really what I'm saying here. Well, I did, I just made a motion, or...
The mayor's gone.
Oh, the mayor's gone, okay. So that's my motion, that we work for the next 20 days to try and put something together, and we just don't hand money away and push money away and push taxes on the public that are unnecessary. Thank you, Mayor. That's my motion.
I, I think, before he walked out the door...
That's my substitute motion.
Councilman Williams.
In the very beginning of this, going back, well, let me go back a couple of years. We were very insistent, and Councilman DeCecio and I were very insistent, we have a zero-based budget, that all the information was given to us on a line item. And I believe at the first of this year, I received, and I was making an assumption that the other members of this council received like material. It was a binder about this big, and it went department by department, line item. You saw my pink slips where I questioned stuff as we went through. I'm hoping that the other members of this council also went through line by line and questioned. And I just feel real strongly that, I think, what was that, January? February? February? We have had a lot of time, and we've had the exposure to the information. It has been our responsibility to go through it, research it, and if we had questionable expenses or whether it was services, programs, or positions, it was there. We could do it. I didn't hear it brought up by councilpeople. I did hear just the support on what you heard, well, a couple items you did include on things that I questioned strongly, and staff is very responsive. But I, I think to do that and to follow this motion, to me, I wouldn't want to touch this without going out and have full community exposure and give them an opportunity to participate in this process. We have already had all those budget hearings. I believe the line item budget was also on the internet. Is that correct?
Yes.
So people could go online and look. So I, I'm not going to support this motion.
All right. Thank you very much, Council. And my understanding is that the substitute motion was, maybe someone could reaffirm what the substitute motion was. Mr. Home?
I, I've heard the substitute motion was, I believe in the words of the maker of the motion, was to kill the tax increase and to postpone the discussion of the same until sometime before the 26th, which is the code required deadline.
Okay. So that's the motion that's on the table. For the reasons I described earlier, I'll be supporting the underlying motion, will not be supporting the substitute motion. Is there any other comments relative to the substitute motion? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
No.
Pastor.
No.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Nope.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Diego.
No.
Mayor Stanton. No. So the no's, the no vote passes, or the no vote was successful on a six to three vote before this city council. So the motion on the table was the original motion by Councilman Nowakowski to support the city manager's recommendation to float the property tax rate and set the levy for the 2016-17 budget. I'll now turn to any member of the council, do they have any comments they want to make on the underlying motion, the original motion by Councilman Nowakowski? Councilman, you, oh, Councilman Waring, please.
I will just say one thing. So for those, again, who said this is overwhelmingly obvious that all citizens support it, apparently not in this council. I'm not counting votes, but I know how I'm voting. I think Sal has articulated very clearly at this public and open meeting that he's voting no. Two other members have, in the other party, have indicated that they're voting no, so the most that could pass by is five to four. That does not sound like unanimous support out in the world to me. Please remember, anybody who votes for this was the fifth vote to raise your taxes. It is a big vote. It's a big issue, and it's interesting that this is going to be a bipartisan vote, perhaps both ways. So, interesting times in the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Waring, for the political analysis. Any other comments?
Come and watch, all the time.
All right. Councilman Nowakowski, you also asked for a change of voting order. I don't know if you want to withdraw that motion, we'll just have a regular vote. Okay. So that, that part of his motion, so the only motion on the table then is to support the city manager's recommendation to float the city property tax rate and set the levy for the 2016-17 fiscal year?
Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski, please.
I'd like to have a comment.
Of course.
I'm a product of the city of Phoenix. From the Head Start program back 48 years ago that I was in, going to our Parks and Rec and learning how to use a bow and arrow, how to swim, to doing community service hours at our senior centers, earning points to go to flagstaff with our, our Parks and Rec staff, where many of the people in that van, it was their first time to ever see snow, to ever go outside of their little vadio or their little neighborhood. So all these programs have really changed people's lives, from the after-school programs to our senior programs, and the relationships that the community has with the police officers. I know it's changed my life, and from a kid from the neighborhood to becoming a city councilman for this great city of Phoenix, serving, my father was a LEAP commissioner, and I remember going to meetings in this building right here, and my reward for sitting in a three, four-hour boring meeting was to go across the street to Jack and the Box and get a milkshake. And then I became a chairperson for the LEAP program, the community, Santarosa Community Council. And it's coming together as that Team Phoenix approach, that we changed our neighborhoods, that we changed people's lives. And that's why I'm voting for this, because it's those services, it's those programs, it's those opportunities that we've give those individuals that, like myself, that wouldn't have those opportunities, because we come from a working family. So when I vote today, I'm voting not just because of our employees deserve it, it's our residents deserve it also. It's a little sacrifice that each one of us have to give, but those sacrifices pays off in many different ways, from future council members to lawyers, doctors, engineers. And I just really want to thank all those mentors, from the Head Start programs to our after-school programs, to even those individuals that serve our seniors that were overseeing my community service hours. Thank you for making me the person that I am today. And I've voted three times on this budget, and many of us here have voted three times. We had the opportunity to debate, and we, we debated a lot. We debated about the body cameras, we debated about all kinds of things. And to come to the 11th hour and to hold us hostage, it's, it's sad. It's sad that we do this to our firefighters, our staff, our police officers, and it's not right. And out of good consciousness, I'll be supporting this, and I'm asking my colleagues to really support this, because we can't continue to ask for programs without some type of funding mechanism behind it. And throughout the budgets, we talked about this property tax. It's been 21 years, 21 years that we haven't raised the levy on the property tax. And I think it's, people are ready to make that sacrifice to make sure that we live the quality of life and have all these amenities that the city of Phoenix provides for our residents. So Mayor, I just really want to thank all those individuals that are going to be supporting it. And it's sad that we can't say the individuals, there's been individuals here, Bill Gates, that's not here, but Jim Waring and, and Sal that all along voted no on the budget. But the rest of us have supported it, and that's where the debate should have happened, and not, not to wait until the 11th hour. And it puts us all in an awkward position, but I'm going to stick strong and, and support my, my three votes in the past. With that, Mayor, I'm going to be supporting that.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Nowakowski. Councilman Pastor, did you have a comment?
I do, and I'm not really sure. I'm trying to formulate my thoughts right now in a sense of how do I deliver and, and really express what I'm feeling at this moment?
Wow.
Wow is right. Sal, you know, you get emotional, I get emotional, and it's only, it's fair. So, as a woman, as a young girl, and growing up the city of Phoenix, I am a product of you. I sit in front of you today because of that. Like Councilman Nowakowski said, we are products of the vadios. And products of the vadios means tough times, means sacrifices, it means coming together, working together, solving things together. It means representing your city. And as a young girl, I went to many nonprofits where it had leadership programs. I probably wouldn't be sitting here today because of them, because I was a tough kid. And as you see, I see today, I may have evolved in the way I have, but I'm still that fighter in those streets. And I represent those streets, and I represent those neighborhoods, and I know the needs of those neighborhoods and the wants of those neighborhoods, and I am here to protect those neighborhoods and make sure they thrive. And so this is a difficult vote. This is a hard vote. And I don't care what anybody says, because we, I sat literally two last night looking to see what we could possibly do. And as a native, really, I'm a fifth-generation Arizonan. So I have been thinking this morning, how do I, how do I speak about this? And seeing how the politics has changed, I have, I was fortunate enough to have a father that made it to congressional office, but you know what? It was always tough. He didn't make it there till I was 22 and I was in college. So he had a whole life before that. And the struggles that my parents had to make sure that we had the things that we did, and the stories my mom would tell me in the sense that I didn't pay this bill, I had to pay this other bill, and I have to go do this, and, you know, that's just what a family does. And children don't know that. And children just think that their parents are loving them and giving them what they need. So because I'm a product of Arizona, and because I'm a product of the city's programs of sitting at 14, a young girl at 14 that didn't know anything, along with Dan Carroll, on a youth commission that taught me some leadership skills, that taught me how to represent in a, in a meeting, and how do you speak, and how do you introduce yourself? There are many programs that the city delivers and gives to us, and gives to those kids in those communities that I represent and those families. And as many of you know, I'm an educator, and one thing that changes is education and exposure and mentorship that we need in our community. As they grow and as there are a future, these are items that are needed. So this is a very emotional vote, because I represent them, and I'm one of them, and they need those services, and they need those items. And yes, we can look at many different things, but you know what? We also need safety. What makes a neighborhood thrive is they feel safe in their neighborhood. And these are the things that make Phoenix vibrant. So people will say, I will get criticized, I'm just, by my father saying, "You're getting too emotional about this. Hold it together." But it is an emotional vote. Men show it in different ways. They show it like robust speaking and, and showing or throwing things out. I just show it in many other forms. And so that's what makes us different. And so, that's what makes us different. That's what... That makes our community different. So, I will be voting yes for this motion.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Pastor. Any other comments by members of the council? Councilman Valenzuela.
Thanks, Mayor. Now, this is a... We knew this day would come, that we have... We had 15 budget hearings spread out throughout the City of Phoenix, eight council districts. I personally participated in five of those budget hearings, and overwhelmingly, the people who came out and voiced their opinion, you know, I don't think anyone strongly advocated for a revenue increase for the sake of advocating for an increase. People understand that it comes down to a matrix. It's down to a science, really, I think. You have a service, and in that service, it starts with public safety, that is, any government's top priority is to keep people safe. You also have things like after-school programs, senior centers, parks, streets, and the list goes on and on. Then, you have the... Those that provide that service, which in our case is more than 13,000 city employees, 13,000 public servants, doing more with less. We're running on our leanest government in 40 years. More than 13,000 employees who have taken pay cuts for the last several years and continue to come to work and do an outstanding job. And then, of course, the third thing we have to look at is the cost. How much is this going to cost us? And I think during those budget hearings, everyone had to ask themselves a question. How much am I willing to pay for this service and this high level of customer service? And, you know, I do think that we have some on the council. In fact, I know that we have some on the council that speaks of increases as if they're meaningless, we don't have to do it. You've got to love it when politicians speak for the sake of transparency and then give half the information. You know, for example, this lobbying contracts and all the information that goes into that, you know, we spent $900,000, we spent $1 million last year, we spent $2.1 million, whatever the numbers might come out to, and they're always different, apparently. What I do know is part of our government relations effort, or all of our government relations efforts resulted in nearly $120 million in grants that came back to the city. In fact, since 2011, you know, we've spent more than $6 million on advocating for grants. It's a big number. That's half the information. Do we really need to spend $6 million, $6.3... $6.4 million since 2011 for these grants? Do you really think we need to do that? I mean, I guess if I ask you the question in that fashion, I can anticipate what your answer will be. Most likely, it's going to be no. What if I told you that since 2011, the city has received more than $578 million in return funds? So, yes, we put out a little over $6 million, we've received $578 million. Those are round numbers, by the way. Since 2012, we have received more than $40 million in public safety grants. That's putting... Helping to put police officers on the street, firefighters on the street, and of course, Homeland Security grant funding. Recently, we've had... We've been awarded a Tiger Grant, which will help our transportation efforts throughout the City of Phoenix. And, you know, and so, you get the point. You know, there's a difference between a cost and an investment. This is... These things are an investment. You think we're facing a tough decision now? Can you imagine if we actually did cut some of these efforts and what our city would be left with? So, this increase obviously is tied to the general fund. You think about what is being funded out of our general fund, and it is things like putting police officers and firefighters out there. It is to support our libraries. It is to support our senior centers and after-school programs. It is for street repair. And when you think about those services and what they really mean to people, and you think of this property tax increase, and it is good government to do it in this form, it's a floating tax, you know, who doesn't loathe any tax? But if it's between these two options, this increase is the lesser evil, clearly. So, that said, I... I'm... If I haven't made it clear, I'm obviously a yes vote for this increase, and, you know, it's the right thing to do. I do want to thank every city employee that has continued to get out there and to work every day and to provide this service at the level that you do. I want to thank our city manager and staff, and I'd like to thank every one of my colleagues for driving out as much information as possible. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Waring, do you have additional comments?
I just wanted to respond to something. So, the question about the lobbying thing, it's not like I pulled it out of thin air. My numbers are accurate. If you believe Jeff Barton, who is sitting right there and is the city's budget director, he is the source of these numbers. They shouldn't have been surprised you. They sent them to you, too, based on a request. So, they are what they are. They're actually probably higher now than they were, because these are the actuals from 2014, 2015, the last year that they have the actual numbers. It's good that you support these programs and so forth, but the idea that the numbers are changing or that I just made them up is flat wrong. You have them in your possession, too, and my source is the budget director, who is sitting right in front of us. It's right here.
Councilman Waring, I do have them in front of me. What I'm surprised that... I also have another number in front of me. We received more than $108 million in grants last year. That number's in front of you as well. I'm wondering why you never report that number. I guess that's my point. It's, you know, it's... We shouldn't provide just half the information here. If you want to be transparent, then let's be transparent.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Now, it turns to you. Any other comments?
Well, if they're going to clap, we can go back and forth on this all day, Mayor. I'd be happy to do it.
Councilman Waring? If you had additional comments?
Well, I guess I'm just...
Discussion and debate, if you have additional comments.
I guess we're giving a lot of credit to people that perhaps deserve it, perhaps don't. My experience with our lobbying team has been a little different, certainly at the legislature, anyway. I've cited some of these examples pretty much year after year, actually. You know, this is a $37 million item. It affects every property taxpayer in the city. You don't want to spend three hours on it, but I do. So, you can run for office yourself. If you want to just shout out from the audience, stop. Kids don't do that in kindergarten. They get in trouble. So, I will say this. You know, it's great that there might be a return on investment, but that's the argument that's made about every program in this budget. Oh, we make... We get 20 to 1 return on investment. We get this and that. I used to hear that at the legislature, too. Well, it's funny, we're always in such dire financial straits. We have so many great investments, like our lobbying team. It's fantastic. It's just a bunch of nonsense. Don't be snuckered. I think this vote today, it sounds like it's going to be five to four, based on what people have publicly said in a publicly noticed meeting. I don't know. That seems to indicate there are some qualms on both sides of the aisle. That should be telling for the city staff and those who are supporting this, that the... We're all for it out there in the world. It's not so. So, keep pushing, keep raising taxes. We should put up a sign outside the City of Phoenix, and I think the ground transportation tax went into effect, I think, on June 16th. We should put up a sign, "Phoenix."
Councilman Williams?
Can we call for the question, please?
Come work here. We haven't raised taxes in two weeks.
All right. We've called for the question. Is there a second?
I'll take that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor... Excuse me. Roll call.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. I believe the call for the question passes on a six-three vote. Under City Council rules, we'll now move immediately to a vote on the underlying motion, Councilman Nowakowski's motion. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. The motion passes five to four before this City Council. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. This council will take about a 15-minute break. I think we'll have to use the restroom, make phone calls, et cetera, and then we'll go back to our regular agenda. Thank you so very much.